I'm logging in right now. Jen Dodge just texted me. Um, she's good to go and we are, so.
Okay.
And, um. We haven't turned the mics on yet, but I will, or. Um, if you don't mind, please.
Mics are on. Yes, we already went that way.
Joe and I need the meeting.
Can you see it? So we can see it, please.
Hello, everyone.
Wow, thank you. It's a wonderful thing.
You all set, Bob? Almost. Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school committee meeting of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Please rise for the plaid allegiance.
My allegiance is to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I just want to send out condolences on behalf of the school committee to the family of Tony De Simone. Tony's wife Margie was a longtime teacher in the system. His son Michael was a member of the school committee for several years. He was a very nice man, very active in the community. He'll be sorely missed, and I I just want to let the family know that we're thinking of him and send out condolences and our thoughts. And first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one school committee meeting. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five zero.
Mr. Chair, just before we go on, please, since we're doing condolences and remembrances, Art Fallon. When I first came to Burlington, was involved in technology, was a longtime administrator here. His wife worked in Pine Glen. His daughter is an art teacher for us, again, a great contributor to Burlington and Art recently passed as well, so our thoughts are with his family.
I hadn't heard that. Sorry to hear that. He was a very nice man, too. Good guy. Item three on our agenda, approval of the warrants. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the warrant as presented, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, aye.
Aye, abstain.
Two abstains, I'm sorry. Three zero two. Next item is public participation. Just as a reminder, we have a three-minute limit on public participation, and public participation is for somebody who wants to speak on something that's not otherwise on our agenda. If you want to speak on something on our agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to do that when we get to that point in the agenda. So having said all that, is there anybody under public participation? Don't see anybody, and nor does Bob. Okay, so we'll move on to item five, informational reports, subcommittee reports.
I have a quick one from Beth. Go find it.
Um, I'm, excuse me, I know that you people like to speak, but I'm having trouble notifying the meeting that people want to speak.
Huh?
Not, not sure where we can actually put in our names to speak.
But he just texted me as well that wanted to speak and cannot find a way to actually access that, so.
Um, are you talking about speaking on a, on a, an agenda item or under public participation?
No, public participation. I would like to speak as well.
Okay.
I think the chat is not activated. I think that's the problem right now.
How convenient.
Excuse me?
How convenient.
Bill, we don't, we don't take public participation through the chat, so it's not about convenience. You have to hover, Bob, tell them how to hold over the name.
Right. If you hover over your name, any person who's on the meeting, you have the option to raise your hand. Right now, there is a member who has their hand raised, and then we would call on that person.
So, Bill, was the comment meaning that we weren't?
I don't see any way to do that, so. Next time I'll show, next time I'll show up in person, that's fine.
Well, we can hover with this. Over.
I'm having the same difficulty Bill is. I'm hovering over my name as well, and I'm unable to flag anything on here.
I'm also, I'm also hovering over my name, and I cannot find where to raise my hand.
Can any of you click on your name and no one is able to raise their?
I'll tell you what. Excuse me, despite what one of the prior speakers said, we're certainly not trying to prevent anybody from speaking of public participation, but if you're not present, we don't know that you are to speak. Now that I know that several people would like to speak, I will be happy to give you that opportunity. So whoever wants to say something, just identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
We can see them. They can raise their hand.
Yeah, people are raising it.
Hi, my name is Bill Lozano. I am in my seventeenth year as a classroom teacher at Fox Hill. I'm the parent of a third grader at Fox Hill and a sixth grader at Marshall Simons. I'm a longtime Burlington resident, a proud member of the BEA, and an incredibly proud educator in town, being a product of the Burlington Public Schools. Um, I one hundred percent support our bargaining team's continued insistence on maintaining flex time language for the elementary educators. We already go above and beyond our flex time, working long after kids leave our classrooms or after our own kids go to bed, or an hour before, hour or more before school starts in the morning, on weekends, at home, when we'd rather be spending time with our families, and all of the above. I one hundred percent support our bargaining team's continued demand for the reduction of our one hundred and eighty-seven day calendar. I one hundred percent support our bargaining team's repeated calls for the need to rework the calendar to include early release days for PD and teacher collaboration time. I one hundred percent support our bargaining team's refusal to extend the school day by fifteen minutes, which is roughly six full school days to our school calendar. I one hundred percent support our bargaining team's continued engagement with the school committee in demanding a contract that respects us. The key word being respect. It is, is it, I'm going to ask you a few questions here. You don't need to answer, I just want you to think about them. Is it respectful to refuse to engage in discussions? Is it respectful to turn off your screen and refuse to engage in a discussion? I'll repeat that question again. Is it respectful to turn off your screen and refuse to engage in a discussion when you are bargaining? Is that bargaining in good faith? Are you showing any respect to educators in extending their school day by fifteen minutes, which is approximately six full school days, and not compensating us for that? I also know that the school committee bargaining team has non-starters as a part of your negotiating. Non-starters being things that you will not budge on, you will not even negotiate. Is that bargaining in good faith? It is a sign to me of complete disrespect. In my mind, the educators in Burlington should feel heard by the school committee, should feel supported by the school committee, and should feel, at the very least, respected by the school committee. You can say you respect us and support us, but actions speak louder than words. I coach six, a sixth grade girls' travel team here in town. This is my one night off this week. It's a busy time of year. We have a practice Monday, we have a practice Thursday, we have a game Wednesday, we have a game Friday, we have a game Saturday. This is my one night off. I'd rather be reading Harry Potter with my daughter, I'd rather be playing Clue with my daughter, I'd rather be watching the UMass basketball game, but I'm not. I'm here fighting and asking for the respect of the school committee. I would like to end my comments by saying that I encourage the school committee bargaining team to continue to respectfully engage in bargaining discussions with the BEA, but I would be mistaken by saying that, because there has been a lack of respectful engagement thus far. So I am going to encourage the, the school committee bargaining team to not continue, because you haven't done it yet, to start respectfully engaging in bargaining discussions with the BEA bargaining team. Teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. Thank you for your time. Go Red Devils.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hi, this is Susan Schultz. I'd like to go next, if that's okay?
Sure.
So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a nearly twenty-year resident of Burlington with children currently in the mute, on the school system. My kids began their educational career at the Memorial School, knew when it opened. They've survived their tween years at Marshall Simons, and now my daughter is currently a student at Burlington High School. My son will be a freshman there next year. Since my children entered the school system ten years ago, I've really been impressed by the quality of education that the Burlington community offers us. I give back to the same community by giving my time to countless local organizations, by coaching baseball, softball, I'm a Girl Scout leader, I give time to adopt a class, PTO, Burlington Youth Basketball, Food Pantry. So you've probably seen my face at countless events, countless events around town, from veteran ceremonies to vigils demanding equity for all members of our community. I'm by nature a do-gooder. I'm also a special education teacher at Francis Wyman. With twenty years of experience, I've dedicated the last twelve years to my students, my colleagues, my administrators, and to this school committee in Burlington. I work hard to make connections that build trust and let people know that I'm loyal, hardworking, caring, and dedicated to making the world a better place, starting in my own home and in the classroom. I put in many hours of prep work outside of the bell, at school and at home, so much so that my own children have vowed to never become teachers. Over the past few years, I've seen a decline in the morale of the teachers of this town and everywhere, if I'm being honest. Some of us playing double duty as residents in the public schools and residents in the town and public school employees, and were disheartened by the lack of respect that people show for our professionalism and dedication, both in online forums and casual conversation. We're first forced to turn the other cheek when our neighbors throw punches at the school system that we care so much about. We listen to lies about how our average pay is six figures, when if you look at the published pay scale, only those with a doctorate degree plus at least twelve years of experience plus a stipended position could meet that threshold. I don't get a thrill out of confrontation or complaining, so I'll keep this brief. The staff of the Burlington Public Schools deserve respect. This starts at the top with the school committee bargaining with our union representatives. The teachers, nurses, and staff working without a contract have given all that they can and more, because it's the right thing to do under these circumstances. We often do it at the expense of our own finances, emotion, safety, and more. Many are tempted to leave the teaching profession altogether, myself included, on many days. We've done everything that you've asked of us through COVID, even when we disagreed philosophically and as experts in the trenches. We are tired. We deserve a fair contract, and in order to maintain the highly qualified teachers that we currently have on staff and to recruit quality teachers in the futures, I ask you to negotiate with our team. I also ask that families in the community demonstrate your appreciation for the teachers, nurses, and staff by urging the school committee to make a commitment to getting a contract signed. Thank you for listening.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
I'd like to speak. This is Mary Catherine Concezon. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Memorial. I'm speaking as a member of the BEA and in support of the work that our bargaining team has been doing to negotiate a fair contract that shows that there is respect for the time and dedication that Burlington educators put in every single day. As mentioned, one of the bargaining items that the BEA is working to keep in our contract is something that's been referred to as flex time. This is a time where teachers have professional discretion over when and how we use part of our non-student-facing contracted hours. As someone who has a second job, I currently have the professional discretion to come to school earlier on the days that I'm working so that I can be at my second job on time in the afternoon. The success of the educational system has always relied on teachers working well beyond our contracted hours. I sat on the couch many nights with my dad with his black and white composition notebooks, reading journals. That has always been something that's true. However, that has been very, that has been much more glaring through teaching during the pandemic. If we lose our professional discretion for things like flex, flex time, and that time is then allocated to meetings and professional development, teachers will be spending even more of our contracted time, of our hour, time outside our contracted hours working. I like to share a few specific examples of ways that Burlington teachers are already working beyond our hours to successfully start, serve our students and families. A teacher at Fox Hill invites a group that they call early risers to come to school to review for math tests that are coming up. One of my team members holds homework support groups during their lunch period. I know a teacher who voluntarily, voluntarily participated in an IEP meeting while at home recovering from COVID because they knew how important that meeting was. Behind every report card that gets in the hands of families and every conference, there's a teacher who's working on nights, weekends, and thanks to Mother Nature recently, a snow day. I have a system in my class where I have check-in notes that I discreetly put on students' desks when I notice that they're having a hard time. Just yesterday, I did this, and one student wrote, "I'm just getting tired, and I have a lot of things in my head," which I think is a very relatable thing for all of us right now. I then spent most of my prep talking to that student, making sure that they felt heard and safe to continue onward their day. This is not a complaint. I think I speak for all of our teachers when I say we would give up any amount of our time to make sure their students feel safe and heard. I'm sharing this because so many of our students are struggling right now, and emotional safety in the classroom isn't something that just happens. It takes time. I'd like to publicly thank the families of Burlington students who have shown us support in the form of hand sanitizer or a kind email. If you're wondering how else you can support us, reach out to the school committee in support of the BEA's stance for a fair contract. Your children deserve learning conditions where they are physically and emotionally safe, where they are heard and respected, where they have what they need so that they can learn. In order for that to happen, teachers need to be heard and respected and have what we need so that we can teach.
May I interrupt you now? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Three minutes. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
I would like to speak.
Uh, please, please identify yourself.
My name is Amanda Hannigan. I'm speaking tonight as both Burlington resident and a teacher at Pine Glen Elementary. Um, and I also, like my colleagues who spoke before me, would like to express my full support with our BEA bargaining team and would encourage the school committee to begin respectfully negotiating that, our contract with them, a fair and equitable contract for Burlington teachers. Along with showing my support for the bargaining team tonight, I also want to address the flex time discussion that was talked about in MK's, um, public speaking. So for, those might be confused about the flex time and what it entails. It really has to do, all Burlington teachers contractually are obligated to work sixty-five minutes outside of the student school day. At the elementary level, aside from the fifteen minutes before the student day starts, then the fifteen minutes after the student day starts, the rest of that time, we can either put at the beginning of our day or our end of our day, and also have flexibility with how we use that time. Personally, I choose to use my flex time in the afternoon after the kids leave. I find this is a good time to answer emails I haven't gotten to, check in with parents, collaborate with colleagues, develop and plan lessons for the four subjects I'm responsible for teaching every day, continue planning and doing work that I otherwise wasn't able to get to during my one prep period that is typically interrupted with, by one thing or another, whether it be a student, a copier down, a meeting. This additional flex time gives us that opportunity to make up that missed time throughout the day. I could go on and on with how I choose to fill this time and how I have chosen to fill this time in my past nine years as a Burlington teacher, but with only three minutes to speak, I'll just leave it at that. For me, flex time allows me that additional time to prepare what's needed in order to be the best teacher I can be for the students of Burlington. I know there's discussion to possibly eliminate this elementary flex time, which really has me concerned. My assumption is the goal of eliminating this would be to shift things like curriculum council meetings, additional PD and mandatory trainings into these afternoons that are currently being used by teachers as this additional prep time. Even if this were just to happen a couple days a week, that's valuable time lost that cannot be replaced. And by eliminating flex time at the elementary level, my colleagues and I will lose the ability to use our own professional discretion in how we see fit, how we think we should use our time to best serve our students. To put it bluntly, without having professional discretion over this time, my job as an elementary teacher in Burlington is simply unsustainable. Now more than ever, teachers need adequate time to do our jobs and to do them well, and our students need us. This isn't a plea for more time, although I wish it were. This is just a plea to keep the time we currently have built into our contract at the elementary level. Please put trust behind your elementary teachers in Burlington to use their flex time as professionals that they are. I respectfully ask and encourage you to please, please begin working with this bargaining team to settle a fair and equitable contract for both our educators in Burlington and the students.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes, I would like to speak. Um, my name is Valerie. I am a teacher at Memorial Elementary. Um, I have been an educator in Burlington for close to two decades, and I have always been so proud to work here in Burlington. I have been lucky to work with such talented and committed teachers who go way beyond for their students. I have felt supported, encouraged, and valued. At the start of the pandemic, we pivoted and changed to whatever was best for our students and their safety. We literally risked our health and lives and were a risk to our families before there were vaccines available, but there was nothing we would not do for our students. We taught remote, hybrid, in-person. We made sure we made it as fun and engaging as we could, and to be sure to check in with our students' social, emotional state and possible signs of trauma during this pandemic. We did whatever was asked of us, no matter how many hours it took to pull off. What has been so disheartening is hearing from our BEA negotiating team that the school committee members on that bargaining team refused to even listen. They had their cameras off, and they refused to listen what was important to teachers and used words like non-starter. It is really heartbreaking to put so much of yourself into a job and for your students and then be discounted and thrown aside by your district. Many teachers are facing exhaustion, burnout, mental health issues, as they struggle to keep going to fulfill their students' needs. We are told that the solution to this is work a longer day, a longer school year than many districts in the state, oh, and by the way, less pay. Teachers deserve a fair contract and a cost of living increase. Please hear us when we say we fully back our BEA members on the negotiating team. As an elementary school teacher, flex time is really important to me. Every day, I arrive at school between seven fifteen and seven thirty AM, and I leave anywhere between three thirty and four thirty, depending on the day, way beyond my contractual hours. However, this time is what my team uses to collaborate, to discuss a student that appears to be needing additional support, and how are we going to provide that for that student? We make telephone calls to parents to discuss any concerns we see. We consult with guidance, special education, and ELL teachers. Then we clean up our rooms, wipe down desks and counters, put them back together again, and prepare for the next day. If we are forced to attend meetings after school, there will be less time to support students, communicate with parents, and prepare for the next day. Our instruction will suffer, our communication with families will suffer, and in the end, the students will suffer. Please believe we're doing everything we can to best support our students in these uncertain times. I see teachers around me every day supporting students and making them feel valued and safe. It would be so meaningful if the teachers felt supported and valued as well. Please consider and listen to our BEA representatives as we have done everything you have requested of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody with public participation, um, not related to the BEA, uh, negotiations? If not, I think I'm going to cut it off there. We have a lengthy agenda this evening. We've heard from quite a few speakers. We appreciate your input. Um, but if there's no other public participation on other subject matter, then I think we're going to move on.
Excuse me, excuse me. That is absolutely not okay.
Who's this?
Is it this public participation? What, because you want to go home, Tom? No, thank you. No, thank you.
Who's this? Talking to? Who was that?
Is that Bill? I think it was Bill, too.
Is that Bill? Is that Bill?
Yeah.
Bill, I'm trying to be reasonable here, but I gave everybody a fair chance to speak. I think the point has been made, but we have other things to do. I'm not trying to shut anybody up.
Public participation for your own benefit. Not okay.
We do not have other things to do. This is what we are here for.
Are you kidding, Tom? That is absolutely, this is the disrespect we're talking about. Give me a break.
Bill, if you want to comment about disrespect, there's a certain lack of disrespect. Respect being shown all around here, so let's not get into that.
Um, excuse me. No, don't throw that, don't do that, don't.
Hello?
Is there someone else who? Or they'd like to say?
Don't do that. Do not throw that back on him at all.
Excuse me?
How dare you, how dare you?
All right.
Honestly, I have been in this district for fifteen friggin' years.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna move on now, um, Mr., Mr. Corner. We're moving on in our agenda.
This is public participation.
Public participation is over.
I'm sorry, what?
Public participation is over.
But what you asked, Mr. Mercy.
I support the BEA.
What you asked was if anybody with the BEA negotia.
Um, what if you asked if there were two more people who wanted to speak, and then they could decide which people should speak? People feel strongly, obviously. I do want people to feel heard. I don't know if there's something else people want to say. It was pretty clear to me what people are saying. Um, is that something you'd be willing to do as chair, is to ask if there were two more people saying, or something like that?
How many other people want to speak? Could I just have a show of hands?
One.
I see one. Is it just one person?
Okay, all right.
Okay, the person I see raising your hand, and I, I can't, I can't see a face, but I see the hand.
Donna Murphy.
Uh, you, uh, you may speak. Do you have a name on that, Bob?
Donna Murphy.
Donna Murphy. Are you? Are you muted, Donna?
Okay. Hi, thank you very much. I'm Donna Murphy. I'm a reading specialist at Francis Wyman School and a member of the BEA. I've been teaching in Burlington since two thousand. I was on the last three negotiating teams. I was on the negotiating team in March two thousand twenty when the world changed. I spent hours and hours that spring and summer in negotiation meetings to ensure a safe return for students and staff. It was the most infuriating and frustrating negotiations that I ever attended. We had to beg and fight for the agreement that we finally settled. We were made to feel that we were just whining about our safety and that we were being unreasonable. Unlike some other district, your teachers never refused to return to work, even though some air quality issues were still unresolved when we started. I felt the school committee attitude at these negotiating meetings was disrespectful and condescending to our concerns. It was so disheartening to me to have to sit through a remote meeting with such important issues being raised, and a school committee representative had her camera and microphone off the majority of the time. Was she even there? Did she hear our concerns? Did she even care? Was she willing to work with us? Was this even worth the family time I was giving up? Aren't you supposed to look at people when they're speaking to you? Two days after teachers got back for training in August, I, along with other teachers, were informed that we would be teaching fully remote classrooms for the year. It was a shock. I didn't feel qualified or prepared for that, but I understood the decision. We received ten full days of a crash course in technology platforms, and school was to start on the Thursday right after this training. At negotiations, I literally begged for the school committee to delay the school start for two days so that the remote teachers could at least try to assimilate all the workshop information and figure out how the heck we were going to do this. We had to digitally create everything from scratch. We were all spending fourteen or more hours every day trying to figure out what to do. We had to. We had to completely create a new digital curriculum. These fourteen-hour days and sleepless nights and tears every day due to the highest stress level was something I never wished to happen to me again. This schedule went on for months for all the remote academy teachers, and we never stopped trying. At negotiations, I begged for us to have just two more days to get ready. Our training days had been fully booked with workshop after workshop, just two days. These would have been added on at the end of the year, so the kids would still get the necessary days in school. And I was made to feel from the school committee that I should just suck it up and stop whining. I will never forget the attitude of the school committee toward us at that time. I have over thirty-five years' experience teaching at elementary school. I'm teacher certified in early childhood, elementary, reading, and I have a preliminary certification in math. I have my master's in teaching reading. In addition to that, I have over sixty more graduate credits. That's an equivalent of about three master's programs. I'm highly educated and trained. I've been dedicated over twenty years to the children of Burlington, and yet I'm made to feel ashamed for being at the top end of the salary scale. I am made to feel ashamed that I'm asking for a fair cola. I'm told that I make plenty of money, and asking for more is gouging the citizens of Burlington. We are told that we are paid well already, but we have the longest teacher year in the state. We are not the highest-paid teachers in the state. What profession shames their employees for being highly educated? Not except teaching.
You've exceeded your three minutes.
Stop yourself.
I appreciate your comments.
I cannot believe this is taking place. Who are you to tell us we can't talk for more than three minutes? She has got a legit problem.
Who's this? Please identify yourself. For the minutes?
Do you carry at the high school?
Thank you. We have a-
I have been, I have been-
I'm answering, I'm answering your question. I'm answering your question. You asked, this is a school committee meeting. We have rules, and it's a three-minute limit on public participation. That's why I'm doing that. I'm not making it up as I go. She, people can obviously speak as long as they want, wherever they want, but if at the school committee meeting, you have to abide by the rules of the school committee. That's the-
You know, unfortunately, I do have experience in working for the town. Not this town. However, a different town, and I understand that there are rules, and I understand that people have things to say. However, there is also the common courtesy of giving everybody an extension.
Everybody's getting extensions so far. Mr. Kuna raises the flag at three minutes, and I've let everybody go another thirty seconds before I jump in, so.
I'm sorry, you want our kids to have extensions for their work, for their homework, for their schoolwork, whatever it is? You guys want us to provide extensions, yet when we speak, we don't get an extension?
Any other hands, Bob, did you see? No, the hands raised. Okay. Seeing no one, we're moving on from public participation.
I do, I do have one comment. I do have one comment that I'd like to make. I just want to clarify, there have been times during, I am one of the members of the negotiating team, but I don't know what messages have been given to you by the negotiating team, and there have been times when I've turned my screen off because I didn't want to bring the meeting into the bathroom. I've needed to go to the bathroom or get a drink, and I have turned the screen off so it would not be disruptive to the meeting, and I was able to get my drink or do what I needed to do and still listen and participate in the meeting and be respectful. And no one on the negotiating team has ever complained about it or commented that it was a problem. And so if you would please pass on to your negotiating team that they should please let me know if there's a problem, and I'd be happy to change that. That has, that, I don't know exactly where all that came from, but it is not an indicator of whether I respect or don't respect the teachers. So I just wanted to make that a comment and make that clear. I also want to say that it really stinks to negotiate with teachers' unions because it is my job to support the teachers, and it's also my job to support the town and the students and the families here, and those interests are not always aligned completely. I do what I can to respect the teachers as much as I can. It's also even higher emotions and higher stakes because of the pandemic that we're living through right now, and it's been going on for way too long, but it isn't over. There's nothing any of us can do about it, and I feel, I feel bad that, I know that sounds weak, but I feel bad that it's continuing to be a problem, and I wish we didn't have to negotiate a contract this year. But we all would like there to be a contract, so we do continue, and there has not been anyone I have seen who has not discussed and negotiated in good faith at the meetings. We are clearly engaged with the bargaining team. Thank you.
I want to say publicly that I was not referring to you. I have felt respect from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, getting back to our agenda, under Section Five, Informational Reports, Subcommittee Reports, does anybody have any Subcommittee Reports they'd like to bring forward?
I have one. I have.
From CPAC, Beth asked me to mention, the CPAC has their next caregiver chat on 1/24, that's January 24th, at 6:30 p.m. It is for caregivers of children with special needs to talk about anything and everything. Information for the WebEx link can be found on the CPAC's Facebook Network page and website. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, do you have a Subcommittee Report?
Yeah, I just wanted to just give a brief update on the Subcommittee for Transportation. We met in mid-December. We discussed many items in regards to reducing the amount of cars in town. In relationships to the schools, we discussed possible use of ride-sharing apps to assist parents and students to get rides for after-school activities. We know that, you know, that some students don't participate in some of the after-school activities that they'd like to because they're having trouble getting rides. So there could be an app just for a group of parents. Some of the apps do vet the drivers, and of course, that's extremely important that we're able to do that or quarry people to make sure people feel that if we propose something like that or put it out there, that everyone feels safe. So we continue to discuss different ways to support our students and parents so that the kids can enrich their education in after-school activities.
Thank you. Any other Subcommittee Reports, Carl?
Thank you. The Townwide DEI Committee met last week, and we are in the process of going through many different documents and kind of examining them, examining them in the lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Next week, we are planning to meet with Amy Warfield and Joanne Faust to further those discussions and ask a few questions. Nothing too specific regarding schools yet, but I feel that the efforts by the schools and efforts by this town committee are kind of in parallel, and I'm not seeing an intersection yet, but maybe in the future.
Thank you.
I, for people who would participate in the English Language Parent Advisory Committee, the LPAC group, unfortunately, it had to be canceled last Monday, and there were, the future meetings were continued, and they've added another one, which I don't have the date of right now, but they will be, so that will be ongoing. I also had a couple of announcements, if I, if no one else has Subcommittee Reports, if I could make them.
Sure.
I wanted to do some congratulations. We had Poetry Out Loud, I believe in person again this year, and that's a program that's just been wonderful for our students at the high school, and I know a number of teachers have been incredibly supportive in making that happen. And our poet laureate this year is Bella Gill. I want to congratulate her. It's really wonderful to see the students perform and get involved in this kind of language and performance, and I just wanted to make sure that Bella Gill got her full announcement and congratulations. Maybe she can come to a school committee meeting remotely at some point, but I want to make sure she got recognized. I also don't follow the sports as well as Mr. Nelson used to, but I did notice that if I, I apologize in advance if I don't say his name correctly, Rithik Prakash has won both the Boston Globe and the Boston Herald All Scholastic winner, and we also had our boys' fall cross-country team won the Division II State Championship this fall. So I know there's a lot of great stuff going on in our schools. I want our students to be getting the full credit for that, and I also thank all the staff and teachers who are helping make these experiences happen for our students, both in and outside of the classrooms. So I wanted to just make those announcements.
Thank you. Anything else under Informational Reports? Ways and Means, Roger, are you here? And if so, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I don't have anything at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Chair, Roger, I just want to confirm, we have a Subcommittee Meeting tomorrow evening, and the full Ways and Means Meeting a week from Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, that's scheduled, we have scheduled to talk about the warrant articles for town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And so it's Wednesday at six? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student Representative.
Hi.
Good morning, Brooke. Good evening. Are you with us?
Yeah.
What do you got?
What do you got? So basically, there's been kind of a standstill with all of the student councils because of the COVID outbreaks, and there hasn't been like a lot of time to meet during the school. Yeah, and, but the sophomores were able to have one or two fundraisers, and they made $275, which is a lot because they didn't get to fundraise last year during the remote year. That's pretty much it. We have a plenary meeting next week, which is the first time since September where we all get to go together and talk about what's going on with all the grades.
Thank you, Brooke. Any other questions for the student rep? Thanks very much, Brooke. Moving on to Item Six on our agenda, Learning. Burlington High School Program of Studies, 2022-2023, First Reading, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're joined tonight by Mark Sullivan, Joe Adubato. You had the draft Program of Studies in your packet. Again, this is a first reading, so Joe and Mark will talk about some of the changes, and then as per usual, we'll have a discussion and then make any updates or changes for the, prior to the second, prior to the second reading. So Joe and Mark, are you there?
We are, yes.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Great, thank you, Mr. Murphy and Dr. Conti. We usually don't have this big of a crowd for the Program of Studies, so I hope everybody enjoys the changes for next year. I just wanted to first thank all the department heads and teachers that are involved in this process. Every year, we update our program to meet the interests and needs of our students at the high school, so tonight we'll go through some of those changes that include some new courses that we'll be offering, some courses that are being taken out of the Program of Studies, and some different modifications to some language within it. So if you look at the memo that we had sent over to everyone on the school committee, the first class that you see is a new course, foundation-level class for literature and society. If you remember, several years ago, we changed our leveling at the high school to include foundation-level classes. That would be, I don't know what the background noise is, Dr. Conti, but if maybe people could be reminded to mute, it might be, it might be helpful. So the foundation-level class was courses for students on IEPs in the special education program at the high school. These are highly modified classes, and if you would, if you remember, over the course of the last several years, as these kids came through the high school, we've added new classes for these kids as they, as they progress through their, through their form. Yeah. Mark?
Sullivan, you're muted.
Yeah, Mr. Sullivan, I muted you, and then please unmute it. Okay. Okay. So I'm not sure where I got cut off, but the, so the foundation-level class, literature and society, that's continuing the program for these students within the foundational program at the high school. Again, it's a special education class. Two new computer science classes, Data with Python. We already have an existing Python class at the high school, the Data with Python would be more of an entry-level class for kids looking to take computer science. And the Data Visualization is actually a new class that's going to be taught by one of our science teachers, which is great that other teachers outside of computer science are getting involved in that, in those content areas. This is using statistics, computer science, neuroscience, and psychology to visually present data, so it's a real interesting course that Mrs. Potter's and the science teachers are putting forward. So I think students would find that very interesting. The, the next group of classes are courses that will be offered to our ninth-grade students. In the past, students in the ninth grade had choices that were mostly full-year offerings in the different electives that we have, whether it's business, music, the finer performing arts, computer science, et cetera. All these elective-type courses are going to be offering semester-based classes. We're hoping that kids coming out of Marshall Simons will consider exploring the Program of Studies and try to take different classes, potentially take a music class and a computer science class, take an art class, perhaps a business course. By having semester-based options for students, they wouldn't necessarily be locked into signing up for full-year classes. In addition, the music department is making some adjustments. Previously, if you were in the marching band, you had to take the class during the school day. The music department's no longer going to have that be a requirement, so if a student wanted to participate in the marching band, they could take, they could do that after school while not taking the class during the school day, and vice versa. They could take the class during the school day if they really loved band, but was, were an athlete or involved in other extracurricular activities, and the marching band didn't fit into their schedule, they wouldn't be required to participate in the band after school. We're hoping these changes for the ninth graders, again, will increase participation across the various courses that we have and allow kids to explore different interests rather than being locked into just one, because there's already so many limited options for our ninth graders, that we're hopeful that they'll be able to explore some different offerings by offering new semester-based classes. The next piece of this is our Health Department. So students at the high school ninth grade all take PE. We're hopeful this year that we get the health teacher back that was taken out a couple of years back, and if we do that, they'll have a ninth-grade wellness offering as well. But without that staff member, we cannot offer that. Tenth-grade students still take physical education in a wellness class. Next year, there is changes, students in the junior class, juniors and seniors can begin to sign up for a variety of health classes that would meet their requirement. They include nutrition in today's world. They could obviously take senior wellness, and there's a sports and medicine class that students could take. Typically, those were reserved just for seniors, but next year, students in the junior class will be able to sign up and get that senior requirement, that health requirement out of the way, potentially freeing up some different options for them in their senior year. So that's the new changes and modifications. There's one deletion, which is Modern America. There was a low interest in that class. The kids weren't signing up for it. It's going to be replaced by a U.S. government class. Mr. Witten is proposing that as an option based upon student feedback and interest that he's hearing for a course that would be similar to my- for, for a course that would be similar to Modern, Modern America, but be of more interest to, to the student body. So Joe, I don't know if you want to pick it up from there?
Well, right now you've just about everything, just wanted to, in terms of the freshman, incoming freshman class. Again, I just wanted to reiterate our art department, you know, had created a half-year option. Music department, humanities, business. So incoming grade nine students will now have that option if they're undecided on a direction to go. It gives them the option to explore, you know, one of the other fields. And I think that's something we've heard over the years with the way our schedule is set up. Students are kind of locked into one specific course and for the entire year. So this option really does allow for freshmen to kind of expand things a little bit more so. We are adding a couple of honors versions to courses that already exist. I think that is another modification, which is listed, but our Italian food culture and cuisine class, our music theory and composition, intro to guitar, are all going to have honors level sections now. And in terms of other changes, our social studies and English departments in the memo are going to be adjusting how they go about grading for students. And essentially, the way it's set up as of now, certainly students can get very, very low averages. But with this, the lowest average would be a fifty for, for a final grade or a failing grade. And, and I think the idea is to allow students, especially at the halfway point of the year, we find sometimes with a student in a really, really, with a low average in class, it's very challenging to pull themselves back up. So the English and history department are piloting this option where students can, the lowest grade they could receive would be a fifty. And they have a pretty detailed rubric that is in the memo provided to the school committee. I'd highly encourage you to take a look at that rubric and let us know if you have any questions on it. Our intern program, which I know the school committee, you know, has heard about over the years. And as you know, it's, it's really doing, it's really a fabulous program. And we just made some slight word changes to that in our program of studies. Again, that's, that's listed in the memo. In terms of the overall structure of the program, it's, it's going to say, stay very similar to years past. We also mentioned our dual enrollment program. And, and just as a reminder for, for the school committee and also the teachers that are here as well. It's, it's a great program at the high school. Some of our high school staff get dual certification, meaning they're high school teachers, but they're also adjunct professors at Middlesex Community College. So what is, what essentially happens is students have the option to pay a little bit extra money. It's a state school rate, which is very cheap, $92 per credit, and students are able to get college credit. So we offer a variety of classes. We offer psychology, we offer computer science classes. We offer Latin and, and a few other classes that are missing right now. But the good news is next year we're adding two more courses. So the elective that Mr. Sullivan talked about, the U.S. government class, that will be a dual enrollment class. So a student again can take, take it for Burlington High School credit, and then they could also potentially get college credit. Also, our AP Spanish class will be dual enrollment. Students can take our AP Spanish class and then elect to get the dual enrollment credit. So what, what's happening now is it's, it's really taking off this year. We have probably about 150, 160 students that are going to be getting college credit. So we have some students leaving with upwards of 12 credits, 15 credits. And I know many of the school committee members have heard it first, but this model has really worked out for Burlington. I think it's, it's starting to take off knowing, knowing the value. The only other thing that was on the memo provided was just a reminder or an update in terms of MCAS and high school graduation requirements. The MCAS for current seniors, DESI has allowed the current senior class to use MCAS approved appropriate courses, which means they don't need to take and pass a test right now for our current seniors. They just need to be in an appropriate course. And we've, we're checking that in with our data pretty consistently to make sure our seniors are essentially passing their senior year math, senior year English, and senior year science to ensure they meet the graduation requirements. Current juniors do not need to take a science MCAS. They do need to take an approved MCAS science course. They do need to take the MCAS English and Math Test. And then for sophomores and beyond, it's back to pre-COVID where, where they need to take math, English, and science. So that's all I have there, Mr. Sullivan. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else.
No, that's great, Joe. And I just add the, the grading for the social studies and English. They're currently piling, piloting that this year as well. We, we talked about it last year during this time when we presented. We wanted to make sure it was in the program of studies in a detailed way this year because not every department grades this way at the high school. And it works well for the English and social studies departments, but it doesn't necessarily translate into other departments right now. But it is a bigger conversation that we're having at the high school, but it's not something that we're ready to do school-wide. So we just wanted to make sure that it was clear for students and families that they know that there are some different grading practices going on and to make sure that we detailed what those look like for students as they navigate the different courses at the high school.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments for?
High school administration.
No, I just want to point out to the committee that I think last year you were presented, Shereen Terrell came in to discuss the National Science Foundation grant that she had written and achieved on behalf of Burlington High School for the computer science courses. So I think, Mark, isn't the, the data visitor, data visualization a part of that grant?
Yes. Yes.
So I just want to see.
It's an extension of that work, yes.
So you'll see the, sometimes you just see the beginning part of the story and you don't see the, the end part of the story. So, so all of that work, all of her work is manifesting itself in a course, so that's, that's great.
Thank you. Arthur, do you have something?
I, I just want to say that I think these are, you know, it's always good to see there's some shifting. I mean, there's certain things that are always there. There's certain things that are required by the state. But the schools are, seem to be modifying and adjusting based on student interest and what seems to be working and trying new things, and I really appreciate that a lot. I was disappointed to see that Modern America was not going to be there anymore, but without the student interest and knowing that the new U.S. government class will obviously cover a lot of modern issues. I think that clearly a U.S. government class is a good thing, and I support that. And also, I reread the book, and the U.S. History II is supposed to cover from 1900 to the present. So hopefully, that course is also covering Modern America, so that was good to see.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, gentlemen, thank you for the presentation. We'll have the second reading at our next meeting. If anybody has any questions or comments, we'll pass them along in the, in the meantime.
Through the chair, Mr. Chair, before Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Adibato leave, I, I was, because of being presented with the program of study changes, it reminded me that we also later in the year will be reviewing and looking at the, the student handbook for the high school. And there were a number of issues last year that were modified and updated, and I really appreciate that. There are still some issues that I think we are, are, need to be looked at, and I think they are school committee policies. And so I'd like to ask Dr. Conti if I would like to pursue re, looking at the, they're mostly under the category of bullying. I wrote myself a note. Where is it?
Harassment, sexual harassment.
Yeah, it was bullying, sexual harassment, verbal harassment, and non-discrimination. And it had to do with homeless children as well. So I think there's some redundancy and some perhaps, I just feel it's important for us to update. Those are the kinds of sections that tend to get put back into the handbook every year. And we do need to be careful and check. One of them was most recently updated in, I think, 2016, so they may be up to date. But I would like to look into that. And I was wondering, Dr. Conti, if there was someone like Mr. Porch or whoever you and Mr. Sullivan think would be appropriate to review that with me. I would be interested in pursuing that with the support of the school committee. And maybe we'd have something to say before the next handbook, but maybe we wouldn't, but at least it'd be getting started.
Again, through the chair, Ms. Simon, Mr. Sullivan and I will have a conversation. So I don't have an answer right now, and we can, we can work through that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mark and Joe, do you have anything else as far as that goes, or you all said?
Nope, just thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven, under equity, the equity audit update. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Porch. I think we have, actually, I know we have another Let's Talk About It coming up tomorrow. And, and I know that the work with the, the equity audit has, has initiated. So, Mr. Porch, you online? There you are.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you so much, Dr. Conti, and hello to everybody. But I've seen this many folks on the school committee since I've been involved, but interesting. In terms of the equity audit, we have secured a firm, as you, you folks well know. And we are in the final stages of scheduling. We're going to begin the audit process at the, at the back end of this month. And that will be inclusive of, you know, some small group conversations and really of this firm coming in and digging into, you know, our data. We, you know, we're thrilled with the firm that we have. It's an experienced firm. It's a firm that has done this work. A firm comprised of some, some outstanding educators who have a wealth of experience at, at every level, instructional, teaching, leadership, school leadership, and district leadership. And has been very successful in, in, you know, conducting these types of examinations. So I'm really excited about that in terms of us getting started. I'm going to be reaching out to a cross-section of, of our community to be a part of those focus group conversations to initiate, once we have finalized the, the timeline, to begin at the end of this month. In terms of the DEI student advisory work that we're doing with students, we have one more information session, likely to be virtual. We've had, it's been very well attended by our, by our high school students. They've been phenomenal to, to work with and spend time with. These are, these are bright young people who pay, who pay close attention to everything that's happening around them, who are, who have, who bring to the table some exceptional leadership attributes. And I'm really thrilled, Patrick and I, really thrilled to, to work with this group as we close into finalizing that, that committee of students who will represent the students of Burlington in, in the DEI work and leadership roles. The next Let's Talk About It is tomorrow night, and I'm hoping to have, you know, our entire school committee present for that as well as many others. Hopefully, some of you good folks, some of you good teaching folk can show up as well. It seems to me that you folks need to have a place where you can have a constructive conversation and do it in a way where, you know, we can, we can try to problem solve in, in a coordinated kind of effort. So we're looking forward to doing that tomorrow night. So anybody who is available and interested in attending, you are more than welcome.
Is the link for that meeting tomorrow night on the, on the website somewhere?
It is. It's updated on the website. And so anybody who wants to register, if you click the link, you can register really easily. So looking forward to seeing you guys tomorrow. That's kind of where we are. Questions on anything, I'm happy to respond.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Porch? Thanks, Ray. I think you're the next one on the agenda as well. We will, we all look forward, I think, to tomorrow evening, so. Next item on the agenda is seven B is the Let's Talk About It. So was that the, was that the update as far as that goes?
That was the update, yeah. That's again tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And again, the link is on the website. And we can, we can all go to the Ways and Means Subcommittee at six and then make it to the Let's Talk About It at seven.
Excellent.
I think Roger, I think the Subcommittee, Roger, the Subcommittee, WebEx. So could we get the WebEx out? That would be awesome. Thank you. I thought it was out. Mr. Chair, I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Next item on the agenda, eight, culture and relationship slash thriving COVID update. Possible mitigation and protocol changes. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to start by thanking Barbara Conley and our nursing staff. I think they've had a, a challenging couple of weeks back. I also want to make sure I thank Susan Luminello. We've been on the phone with her constantly, so she's been extremely helpful. Patrick, I just want to make sure you're, you're there because I want to try to step through this. And we, we've done this several times, and I just want to make sure I'm being, being clear. So there's some, I think, some confusion in terms, so we're going to discuss some terms first. And then, and then talk about some of the facts that we have, the data that we have, and then discuss modifying some of the protocols that are, that we're using now because some of the protocols, I think, were designed for a different variant and a different time, and they're not necessarily being effective right now. So we're not talking some major changes, but I think we just need to tweak what it is that we are doing. So I oftentimes conflate isolation with quarantine, and they're two separate things. So I think that can be confusing. So isolation involves when there's a known positive. Quarantine is what's used when there's not a known positive. You could be a close contact and you get put in quarantine. But when you have a positive, then you're in isolation. So those are the, the, the two, two terms that often get confused. So I want to start with some facts. So we have some, some shared facts with everybody, and then we can sort of figure, figure it out from there. So I am trying to do this in an orderly way. So we returned to school on Tuesday, January 4th. And then we had school Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of last week with a snow day on Friday. So on Tuesday, we had 519 student absences, absences, Wednesday, 540. And on Thursday, we had 599 student absences. Last week, we had 77 staff absences on, not just teachers, that's sort of all staff on Tuesday, 79 on Wednesday, and 86 on Thursday. So the trends were, were up. If we looked at Monday and Tuesday of this week so far, we had 472 student absences on Monday and 490 student absences today. And again, we had 52 staff absences Monday and 50 today. The number of absences may have declined, but we may still, we may still be living with some of the absences from the prior week. So just, it's, it's, it's good news they're down, but we may have more people out just because it's not just absence for that day. New COVID cases. So I'm not sure, I've lost track of time, but if you remember back even a year ago, if we had, you know, four cases in a week, that was a, that was a kind of a busy week, a big week for us. So the week of January 3rd, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we had 190 cases, and 60 of those were staff. And then this week to date, so Monday, Tuesday, we have 95 cases and 19 staff. And sort of the data that I got this afternoon, it typically gets scrubbed a little bit, so those numbers might not be exact yet, but we're, we're getting that right away. So, so again, just to give you some background. Currently, there are two definitions of fully vaccinated, and I'm sorry, this is confusing, but it just is. So DESI has a definition, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a definition. Fully vaccinated, according to DESI, does not include a booster. And fully vaccinated, according to the CDC, does include a booster within sort of six months of your last shot. a booster within sort of six months of your last shot. So we believe in the near future, those two definitions will come together, but when DESI says fully vaccinated, that's different than what the CDC says is fully vaccinated, so that can be something that's confusing. Current DESI mandates are, there's the tools that they've, there's no remote instruction, as you know, and the mask requirement has been extended till the end of February, February 28th, so that's, those are, those are sort of what we, what we know. So the changes that we wanna talk about, and we have had lots of conversations with Barbara, sort of including the nurses, we did bring it up with our Joint Labor Management Committee, and we have talked to Susan Luminello. And so the Test and Stay Program is linked to our contacting, our contact tracing, they're both tied together, and contact tracing works when you have limited number of cases to contact trace. When you have 190 new cases, contact tracing is impossible to do accurately, and when you don't have accurate contact tracing information, then the Test and Stay Program becomes problematic, so the two go hand in hand, so we wanna try to modify the two, not eliminate them, but modify the two, so they're more manageable. The other problem with Test and Stay is that Test and Stay can take in asymptomatic, identify a close contact, and then if that student doesn't have symptoms, that student can return to school the next day, take a rapid test, and then go to class. And the issue with that is that there are many students who are asymptomatic, but are still contagious for their first two days of testing, so they won't, they won't flag a positive rapid antigen test. So in working with the Board of Health, they were feeling that Test and Stay is initiated too soon, and that in fact, Test and Stay may contribute to an increased number of cases because we're putting asymptomatic students, again, who don't present like they have an issue, but they've been a close contact, they're shedding virus and going back to class, and then they're taking the virus, the virus with them. So again, asymptomatic, close contact students are, again, that's when quarantine would, the word quarantine would be utilized, again, isolation is for a known, a known positive. So what we believe has been happening is, at some point, and I'm not sure if the two definitions have converged, but they're, just like there was a different definition of vaccination, there was different conversations about contact tracing. We've been contact tracing, in my opinion, we've been doing it too conservatively, so we've been contact tracing and identifying more students as close contacts than we need to be. So we'd like to contact trace at three feet, which is how we are organized, contact tracing at three feet should reduce the number of close contacts that we have, and then make our Test and Stay Program more viable, so that's one aspect of it, is reduce the number of close contacts by looking at how we are spacing students and moving forward. And then if we look at students who are unvaccinated, because if you're vaccinated, you're not considered a close contact, but if you are unvaccinated and identified as a close contact, we want you to automatically quarantine for five days, and then we would start Test and Stay on day six. So that would take the student out of the possibility of bringing the, an undetected, an undetected virus back into school, and it would keep the Test and Stay Program viable, but not have the Test and Stay Program initiate until day six, essentially, so you would have to be out for five days. The way that you can not be identified as a close contact and not be in quarantine is to be fully vaccinated, so that would be that. There's another way that you can be put in quarantine, and that is if you have a positive in your home. So if you're positive in your home, then you can be put in quarantine, and again, what we'd like to do for the students who are in quarantine at home, there's a positive in their house, is to have them also be able to participate in, again, Test and Stay on day six, and that participation can be either with a home rapid test, or they can come into school, and we can provide a rapid test in school. The state just put something out, I think, an hour before this meeting, where they are not requiring a PCR test, those are the long lines that people are waiting in, we used to have to confirm a rapid test result with a PCR test, but because the waits are so long, they are now accepting rapid antigen tests results, and we wanna make sure that we are accepting rapid antigen test results, and we're also trusting families to do that testing and to, and to let us know what the result is for their students. So some of the testing of individuals, some of the testing of students and children are going to, that's gonna get pushed back to families to provide, to provide that testing. One exception here is gonna be for the BECC, three and four-year-olds aren't eligible to be vaccinated at this time, we are seeing cases, positive cases at the preschool, and what we would like to do with the BECC is go back to a 10-day isolation and quarantine, so we'd like to keep students who are positive out for 10 days, and again, because they can bring the virus back in, if they can do that. The current requirements are five days isolation and five days with strict masking, and part of the challenge with three and four-year-olds is the strict masking component, so it's, would be better if we just kept those students out for 10 days, and then they returned at 10, on day 11. Arlington, we've been working closely with all of our neighbors, Arlington has instituted a test prior to returning from quarantine on day six, and what they found is that one-third of the students who were returning on day six are testing positive on a rapid antigen test. So again, I'm sorry, this is kinda detailed, but the PCR test, if you take a PCR test, you can, and you've had COVID, the PCR test can show a positive for many months afterwards, because it measures, I think, presence of the, of the, sort of the genes, the rapid antigen test measures the viral load, so it allows us to look at kinda how contagious you are, and I do believe, try not to editorialize, but I think as tests become more readily available, you may see the CDC or the rules change that would require a negative rapid antigen test before you can come back into a social, a social setting. Again, that's not a requirement now, and what is interesting is they're not requiring testing of students who are a known positive, so students coming out of isolation, they don't require a test because everyone knows they've had COVID, so they don't need another test, so that would be, again, five days isolation, and then five days with strict masking, and that, so you can return on day six. So I think what we tried to do is put together a flow chart, it was at your desk, and we've been going over this with, again, Barbara Conley and Susan Luminello, and what we tried to do is simplify this as much as we can. So you can see, it's basically in a three-column format, with we tried to put a scenario, and then we tried to put, column one is my child is vaccinated, and column two is my child is unvaccinated. So we're gonna post this and make this, make this available, but I just wanna say, sort of an example, my child has a fever or meets the criteria for COVID testing, and again, parents should keep that child home from school until fever-free, and then, and tested with negative results. There are many cases now where a child can have a fever, and because the tests are so hard to get, that I think that many pediatricians are just assuming they have COVID, and then acting and treating it like it's COVID, so there'd be really no difference between the treatment of a vaccinated and unvaccinated child in that particular situation. And again, my child goes to school feeling well, but does not feel well during the day. So again, we're gonna rapid test that child, and then dismiss that child, and then if positive, if the result comes back positive, we'll call the family, and then that child will be in, again, if it's a positive test, they'll be in isolation, and then for five days, and then return to school on day six, followed by five days of strict masking, we're all masked anyway, so that allows students to come back, as long as the symptoms have resolved. Obviously, if the student still has a fever on day six or day seven, the student should stay home until they're, until they're fever-free. If a student can't adhere to the mask, strict masking, then they should stay home for 10 days, and that's the BECC scenario that I, that I mentioned. And then, again, if we talk about a couple quarantine situations, a student in my child's class does not feel well, then again, if the student is vaccinated, they're not considered a close contact, but we would just watch for symptoms with our, with families as well, and again, that would be the same for an unvaccinated student. If a child, if a student in my child's class does not feel well, and my child is determined to be a close contact, again, that would only apply to an unvaccinated student, and again, if a student is determined to be a close contact, students are gonna be placed in quarantine for five days, and then they can test on day six as part of our Test and Stay Program. Again, a positive test would then initiate isolation, and a negative test would return that child to school. And again, if the child is home, could the parent do the test? The answer is yes, the parent could, we're gonna talk about that in a minute, so we're going to really try to work with families, and as tests, tests become more available, you're gonna see more testing at home, and then more sharing of, more sharing of results. Someone in my home is positive for COVID, again, if the student has no symptoms, students, and they're fully vaccinated, the student can attend school in a mask. If the student is unvaccinated, the student has to stay home in quarantine, and the student's quarantine period does not start until the isolation period ends for the positive member of the household, so there's some strict rules there. The quarantine is five days, followed by five days of strict mask wearing, again, students test on day six, at home or in school, positive, again, if there's a positive, that begins isolation, because that's a known positive, and then again, if there's a negative, the student can return to school. There may be situations, we have talked to some families, where if there's a positive in the house, the families have the ability to truly isolate, and if that's the case, then we would address that on a case-by-case basis, it may require some more testing, but we're trying to keep as many positive cases as we are out, because again, we've gotten that call where, again, I haven't even, you know, we don't even interact at all, I'm a healthcare worker, and again, we would address that on a case-by-case basis, but typically, if there's a, the difference, the benefit for being vaccinated is in, if you're in a house with a positive, again, if you don't have symptoms, you can still come to school, but if you're in a house with a positive and you're unvaccinated, then you need to stay in quarantine, and again, we'll test, we'll test, or we'll ask you to test on day, on day six. If my child has mild symptoms, like the sniffles, and again, that fits into one category, the student attends school in a mask and is tested for COVID, and again, if it's, student is unvaccinated, they would be, attend school in a mask and is tested for COVID. Again, if there's no consent for testing, so testing requires consent, then the student would need to go home for five days, and could return to school on day six, again, followed by five days of strict masking, as long as the symptoms have resolved. So again, if we don't have consent to test, we can't test in school, you could certainly get around the consent for our testing, if the parents wanted to test, to test themselves. Again, my child has a sore throat, fits into the one symptom category that requires staying home, that's even prior to COVID, again, it doesn't matter if your child is vaccinated or unvaccinated, your child would stay home, and then you would hopefully test your child for strep throat, and usually, if you're getting your child tested for that, your pediatrician will test for COVID, again, at the same time. So again, I just want to reiterate some of the changes, and then I'll certainly try to answer as many questions as I can, and Patrick, please correct me if I've made any mistakes, so the, what we're saying is positive BEC students should isolate for 10 days, so we want our preschool students to isolate for 10 days, for the reasons that I gave. Test and Stay can be utilized for quarantine students, again, after day five, so we're not gonna test and stay on day one, because those students can test negative and still bring virus in. There's some evidence that the spike that we saw at Francis Wyman prior to winter break was the result of Test and Stay, because we were returning students too soon, and they were testing negative, but still shedding, still shedding virus. So again, Test and Stay can be utilized for quarantine students after day five, if negative return to school, if positive, again, then they would stay out, they would go into isolation, and then fully vaccinated staff, we're saying, can return on day six with a negative rapid antigen test. So again, we really wanna utilize more testing. Part of what I think that we can do, and Bob has some information, is the state has allowed districts to purchase tests using the state bid that Massachusetts went out and negotiated. The, one of the issues that we have with that is, Bob, you said, is we have to buy a minimum of one pallet of tests, which is about 9,000 tests, and, which would cost us, say roughly around $90,000, $90,000. I think if we're gonna require testing, I think we need to provide the testing, I think it would be great to provide it to staff, and not just one, but give them several tests so that they can use them. I also think that we should provide, send tests home with family, families so that they can test their children as well. I think there, I've talked to other organizations who would be interested in purchasing some of the tests from us, if we made the additional purchase, I think Lab said they would buy probably 1,000 tests, and I'm assuming there are other departments in town that could utilize some of the tests if we, if we had them, and it's really a stopgap measure, because my belief is, in about a month, the state will be providing more tests, but I guess I'm looking for a bridge between now and when those tests are provided. So I know Patrick wants to reiterate some of the things that I said, and then I promise, Mr. Chair, we will get to some questions, Patrick?
Yeah, first of all, I just wanna reiterate to Barbara and the nurses, I know Barbara's on the call, all their work. A few things, like one, we did have a conversation with Susan today, I know she would've come tonight, but there was a Board of Health meeting concurrently, but just when parents ask what we're basing this on, if that question comes up, we are going by the CDC guidelines now. The CDC guidelines do say, again, let's equate quarantine with a close contact, a quarantined individual can come back on day six, and the CDC recommends, but does not require, a test. We are going to provide that test in school. If the student tests positive, we will keep them out for the full 10 days. And then isolation, again, let's equate that with a positive COVID situation. The CDC, again, says out for five The CDC, again, says out for five days, comes back on day six, does not recommend a test currently. That's in the CDC guidelines. So we are going by the CDC guidelines. We didn't make these up out of thin air. I know people agree or disagree, but we are going with health professionals. We're not coming up with our own thing here. The other thing you may get asked, why are we stopping test and stay? Because this is gonna, over the next couple of weeks, potentially have a few more kids home than we would have liked. But the reason is, prior to the December break, we had a huge number of cases at Francis Wyman. I think we had 70 something positives between Thanksgiving and the break. And we were able to do that at one school. We were, it was, it took a lot of work. I don't know if it was humanly sustainable. Looking at what people were doing on that day, from classroom teachers down to administrators to nurses, it was incredible to watch. But I don't know if that's humanly sustainable. In fact, I know it's not. We're now starting to see similar caseloads at all of our schools. The reason we're not going to continue with test and stay is because we can't maintain it. We, we can't get it done. We can't do the contact tracing, which up until this week, we had always done it six feet, which is, was more of a CDC guideline. Now we're going to the DESI guidelines at three feet because we think that we can manage that. So those are, those are, again, just a couple, I think, questions I would ask as a parent and just clarifications. These are CDC guidelines, which we're implementing.
Again, I know it's a lot of information and I'm sorry about that. We tried to create some simplified charts, but I'll try to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Christine?
I have a bunch of questions here from parents. I have, I have a list of questions from parents. I, I feel like nobody can hear me because of the mask, but I don't know. So the first question I have is, are we going with, which, which definition of fully vaxxed are we going with?
We're probably going with the DESI definition, which is the two vaccines, not the booster. But my belief is that's going to change to include the booster relatively soon.
Okay. Next question, what are other districts doing in the same situation?
The districts that we've been working with have been going back to the 10-day. The, the, basically the required 10-day isolation. So we're doing a bit of a modified version of that. Arlington is, again, rapid testing students before they return from quarantine. And interestingly, so that's students on day six. And I think 30% or close to 40% of the students who they tested on day six, tested positive. And those are students who were returning. So I think that's one of the things one of the districts is doing. Honestly, Mrs. Monaco runs the, runs the gamut. Many are stopping contact tracing just because they can't, they don't have the bodies to do it. And then pool testing is also a tool that some districts are using. But that's proven difficult as well. So there are districts who are trying to get out of pool testing. And again, that's where you're testing groups of 10 students at a time. And if the pool tests positive, then you have to go back and reflex test all of those 10 individuals. And you send those tests out to a lab and it takes two or three days to get them back. So Watertown, which is a district slightly smaller than ours, I think last week they had a positive hit on over 100 pools. And so it's just, it, it's, it's not sustainable given the cases that, that, that we have.
Next question is, have you, have we considered only close contacting during unmasked activities like lunch?
We have not, we haven't discussed that. But again, that would be a further narrowing of how we close contact. And again, we could discuss a further narrowing after we see how this goes over a couple of weeks. You know, I would say, and again, we didn't, we didn't consider it.
Okay. A lot of these questions are answered with the, the chart. And will that be going up relatively quickly on the website?
Yeah, I wanted to show it to you all first. I, again, I'm trying to get Susan and Barbara to sign off to make sure that the information is accurate. And then, then people will have different scenarios. And that we, what we would like to do is different scenarios come up, we would add the, add the scenario.
Okay. So with families, asking people to keep everyone home, that's based on vaccinated or not vaccinated? And it's explained on the chart? Okay. Are we, so one of the big questions that came up was keeping kids home with the sniffles. But that also is answered on the chart. Send them in masked, they get tested. If they're negative, they stay. If they're not, they go home.
Yeah, and Mrs. Monaco, just, we want kids in school. I think part of the challenge, and I've overused this joke, so staff heard it. But we used to see fever as a real defining symptom. With the new variant, it can be a stomach ache. It could be something that doesn't really manifest itself in terms of how it used to. So I think we're probably being overly cautious and some parents, we're frustrating some folks. But we are seeing positive results from things like sniffles and headaches and, and, and other things.
Here's a good question. What of all kids who've had COVID very recently? And they've gotten over it and they go back to school and then one of their siblings comes down with it?
Patrick, can I call a friend?
You may call a friend, yes.
Barbara's here, I think I know the answer, but I don't want to waste Barbara's night, so I want her to respond.
Thank you. First, before I answer the question, thank you, school committee, Dr. Conti and Patrick Larkin, for all the support of the nursing team during this, during this pandemic. It's been a very trying couple of years. So anybody that's been positive for COVID, they have been saying that they have a 90-day kind of free card, out of jail free card kind of thing. So, but some researchers coming out, there's a possibility that they could have it again, but it's not very common. So the answer is if they've had, if they've had COVID, they don't have to be tested again for 90 days at this point. But everything's very fluid and could change.
Thank you. Great answer. We are not changing the definition of fully vaccinated. We're waiting for the two agencies to agree, correct? And how about the notification of being a close contact? Has that been more generalized with these new rules? Oh, and, and one last thing is, are these new rules in effect now? Are they going into effect yesterday, tomorrow?
Well, we'll talk about timing in a second. Patrick, notification, we, we have some parents who say they don't want to see another email from us. And we have other parents who want to know where the contact actually took place. And we're trying to navigate somewhere in the middle. So Patrick, what are we currently doing?
We're notifying close contacts or we have up until maybe Friday or Monday, just because the number of cases. So they don't have to read the email from us, they can delete it, but we're, we're still going to send it, unfortunately, for some. So I think we're going to still try to do that, is make them aware. I get, so now, again, it shouldn't be as much, and I want to just reference something too. As we get down to three feet and it kind of touches on Mrs. Monaco's question about lunch. I think in most of our classrooms, again, we also have to couple this response with what elementary classrooms look like. And we do like kids to be able to move around and not be locked into seats for hours on end. But right now, I think our teachers are really trying to maintain that three-feet distance. Most of our class sizes allow that. So if it's under three feet is where we would have to do the, the contact tracing. Three feet or more, according to DESI, is not something that we have to contact trace. So we are going to be, you know, connecting with classroom teachers, just to reiterate, do the best we can with, with, you know, the small number of kids around a positive that, that could be potentially a close contact. And we will err on the side of caution if the teacher is not sure. Of course, we're going to err on the side of caution when it comes to designating close contacts.
And again, Mrs. Monaco, the,
the, the point with a close contact is if your child is fully vaccinated and they're asymptomatic, then they come to school.
Correct. So I was under the impression, maybe I was wrong, that if classroom X had a positive case, that the class would be notified that there was a positive case in the classroom. Is that not correct? I, I think that might go a long way towards helping parents feel whether they should be testing more frequently. You know, maybe, maybe this particular student was on the other side of the room, but just to know that someone in the class.
Patrick, what level of?
I just, I just want to, I just want to say what Susan Luminallo said to us today. And I'm, I'm not trying to be short with anyone, honestly. We had 190 cases reported last week and Dr. Conti just told us we have 95 this week. Again, reported, I'm sure there's a lot of unreported cases. Susan Luminallo told us today that everybody should consider themselves a close contact at this point. You all should at this meeting tonight, depending on, you know, vaccination status and if you've had COVID yet. So we're, we're all close contacts, just from, I think, existing in the world at this point. And that's basically the way she talked to us about it today. If we want to send one to every classroom, they're going to, people are going to get inundated with emails. I certainly will do whatever you think is best.
I'm just asking a question. Personally, I think as a parent, I would like to know if there was a positive case in the classroom. But I think it's for you guys to figure out.
And sometimes knowing the positive case is sort of the, the safest scenario because we, we, we know it. I think where we've seen our spike is there are, again, asymptomatic carriers. And, and, and that's where we may be seeing that from. So I think the mindset from the prior variants has to change a little bit. And that's why we're trying to adjust our contact tracing and our test and stay. Because again, I, I, the folks that we're talking to who are the experts are telling us this has the, sort of is, is as contagious as sort of a chicken pox type of virus. But the good news is it seems to be less, less harmful. So, so I think there's going to be more positives. And again, I understand there are other risk factors and everything else like that. I'm just speaking generally. So for us to treat it on the individual basis where we were treating the, sort of the other variants is, is extremely difficult. It's actually unmanageable here, as, as Patrick said, so I should use stronger language.
So if, if a child?
We may be able to, sorry, we may be able to do a, you know, an easier job of contacting elementary classroom families. But high school and middle school, where they move classes and during the school day, it's going to be very, very difficult.
If a child is a close contact at an unmasked time like lunch, the parents are notified, right? Some parents only want to know if their child was a close contact during an unmasked time, like at lunch.
Again, I don't believe, go ahead, Patrick.
The high school, the high school lunches, that would be impossible because we don't have seating charts this year. Again, I believe I'm accurate in saying the middle school, are they eating, they still in the classrooms, I believe? Elementary are in their same classrooms that they're in for most of the day, other than specials. So right now, there's no delineation, Mrs. Monaco. Like if you're in an elementary classroom and you're a close contact, masked or unmasked, there's no delineation. We've been, you know, if you're sitting around a student that's been positive, you're a close contact in that class. And lunch really doesn't, doesn't matter.
Thank you, Patrick. That's all my questions, but I do want to hear about the timing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Carol?
Thank you. When you, when you first sent this out to us on Friday, I was very nervous about every, all the changes. But reading through it a couple of times and the chart was very helpful. In fact, a parent got in touch with me and I looked at my handy dandy chart and said, your kid can go, according to this. And he was very happy, so thank you for that. As I read it, and thank you for the explanation tonight, it was, it all makes sense. It is logical and I feel for you because, I mean, I observe what the nurse and the assistant principal do at my own school. And it's unsustainable to do all these tests every single day. One thing, just a point of clarification, Mr. Larkin said eliminate test and stay. But is it more accurate to say just narrowing of it? Because if a kid is coming back out of quarantine, they're, they're going to be tested at school. Is that correct?
Through the chair, Mr. Foss, how I'm sort of thinking about it is we're delaying test and stay for, for, until day six.
Okay, thank you.
Because the student at that point would either have developed symptoms or not developed symptoms.
Sure.
And, and so that's, because we felt we were sending students back to class who could potentially still be shedding virus.
Right. Something that is mentioned several times in here is, what is needed is help from families to, to be vigilant about any symptoms and to test. The trouble is, it's extremely difficult to get a test for a lot of people. And so I'm really encouraged to, and supportive of that idea to buy the pallet full of tests and make them available to families. That's something that is possible. I think that would go a long way to encouraging those tests to be done at home and lessen the burden at, at the schools.
I think in the not-too-distant future, like every family has a thermometer, that they'll have COVID tests in the cabinet and it'll just be part of the routine. I just think we need a bridge between when those tests become available and, and now. So I think we would do that. And again, Mr. Foss, I, I talk about some of the work being unmanageable, but I want to acknowledge that I'm not doing the work. So it's unmanageable for the staff in our buildings and our nurses, our nurse leader. And so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, Barbara, if you're still listening, I just want to say thank you to you and all the nurses for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Arthur?
Yeah, I just wanted to put out a possibility that I actually read, it was somebody else's idea. If there was some way that we could use parent volunteers or community members, who I believe there are a number of community members who would like to help out. And I know for a long time, we didn't have anyone coming in the buildings because of all the contagion. But if there were a way for us to set up, I mean, we used to have, of course, you'd have to have a quarry check. There might have to be requirements, just like we do for vendors or anyone coming in the buildings for vaccinations. But is it, would it be possible to use volunteers to just take some of the load off of? I, I do know that it's the nurses and the administrators, it's also the teachers. Everybody is going that extra mile. And if there were some non-instructional or non-medical things, like dismissing the buses, for the buses or helping, you know, kids waiting for their test results. Or there may be volunteers in the community who would be willing to come in and help out and would like to come in and help out and take some of that load off of the teachers and the nurses and the staff. So I want to put that out and, and, you know, I don't, if you have a response tonight, that's fine. But to think about it and see if that would be something that might help. And it obviously would be a spotty response, there might be more volunteers in one school than in another, but anything that could help support the staff and take a little bit off their plate would certainly be valuable at this time.
We'll, we'll certainly discuss it, and, and again, I think, I think we're going to have a challenging two weeks, and then, um, from what I'm, again, reading from experts is, uh, we should see the number of cases start to decline, and we'll see the number of people who, um, have already gone through their isolation period returning back to work and sort of, um, both, uh, both, both adults and students. So I think we're sort of in a, in a challenging peak, but I do think we'll, we'll come out of it, uh, soon. Mrs. Monaco, timing, um, we're contact tracing at three feet, um, starting yesterday, so we're going to be identifying fewer close contacts. Uh, we're using the Desi guideline for that. I think that we've talked about, um, again, using the Department of Ed definition of fully vaccinated, and, um, I think we're in a bit of an in-between with, um, with quarantining because at this point, we can't provide, um, the tests. So what I would say is we would like to, we're going to expand, again, our use of our test and tech-stay tests for students in quarantine who are returning to school on day six, so we'll do that. We'd like to though, we're going to talk about ordering some tests. So right now, it's not, it's, a family could purchase tests if they can get them and do their own test at home, um, but we don't feel like we can ask all families to do that equitably. So, um, again, we wouldn't turn down a home test, but we feel at some point we have to provide the tests, and so there just may, we'd like to start that, but there may be a lag depending on the delivery date of when our tests arrive before we, before we get them out. So we can talk a little bit about the test purchasing, um, and those specifics, but I, again, I'd like to move to the, uh, test and stay that is, um, on day six as opposed to on day one right away. And again, if you want your child who's asymptomatic identified, um, to, uh, to come back, um, then there's the choice of being vaccinated because they wouldn't be identified as a close contact at that point. So, so I think that's part of the, uh, part of the distinction. So if that hopefully answers your question.
So it's in effect now?
It's in effect now, yes, and then we'll get the, um, the protocols, the questions, the, the chart up, and as new questions come in, if parents have questions that aren't on there and they want to send them to... Patrick, what's the email address, COVID Concerns?
So they could send in...
Different scenarios, and we'll, we'll populate the, um, we'll populate the chart. So I know I have Bob and Nicole on, and Bob, you had some procurement, um, you did some research on the pallet of tests?
Thank you, Chair, yes. We're still waiting back on a little bit of information because, again, this information is new from the state. Um, so last week, we reached out to all of the companies that were on the state procurement list. Um, I've heard back from a majority of them. We still have to provide, you know, obviously a vendor account, things set up like that. But again, still exploring a little bit. Um, one of the ones that looks promising, even though, again, rather expensive, um, is one particular company, one pallet minimum, um, is about eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, and that gives us ninety-three hundred and twenty-four ti- uh, kits.
And the kit has two tests?
Well, ninety-three, twenty-four is the total number, but the boxes, each box is two tests. Um, the reason I say that one was the most prominent is because, um, the quickest response time and the quickest, um, quoted availability time. Now, again, um, we haven't put an order in yet, so I'm sure the clock is ticking or has already started to take. But like I said, um, trying to get some information rather quickly, trying to get it to you all and Dr. Conti rather quickly, and then, um, the procurement obviously would be finding the funds for this.
And again, looking for this to be a bridge between sort of, uh, basically two to three, three to four weeks a month, uh, until I'm sure we'll start seeing, uh, more tests be available, and I think it's, is a lot of money, but I do think the tests would provide, better answers for us and, um, help give, uh, families and staff another tool, um, so that they can be present, um, more. And again, at some point, a growing percentage of our students are going to be vaccinated, a growing percentage of our students are going to have had, um, COVID, and the same is true of our staff, and they'll be on the other, on the other side of this. You know, do, um, if we didn't have to purchase a pallet, could we start with fewer? The answer is yes, but I do think we have, um, other departments in town who would take advantage of this. I do think, um, again, I could find other districts, um, to, um, offload some of these as well. We don't necessarily have this in our budget, obviously, so one of the ideas we had is this, is this something that, um, again, I know Roger's on the call, that we would talk about in RFT, is this something that we could look at townwide? I just think it's, I think it's a tool that we need in the short term, um, to, uh, help us, uh, manage the number of cases, and again, that would be, we could send every student home with, uh, four or five tests, six tests, um, and they would have those, uh, tests at home, uh, to utilize, um, if that would be helpful to those, um, to those families. Mrs. Monaco, you talked about some of the milder symptoms. Um, if a student is, uh, unvaccinated or hasn't had it yet, um, it may be a tool that a parent could use to say, call into school saying, um, again, "My child had an upset stomach," or sniffles, or allergies, "But they, they tested negative this morning," and, um, that would sort of alleviate, uh, some of the, some of the questions that we have.
Chris?
How many tests are you looking at buying?
Yeah. Can I just jump in for a quick second? So I want to clarify a mistake that I made, too many numbers in my head. Um, I said ninety-three, twenty-four on that one pallet. Um, it's ninety-two, eighty. So approximately forty-four off on my numbers that I told you.
But you're not talking boxes with two tests, you're talking half that number.
That's one, one test total times ninety-two hundred and eighty total tests.
Yeah, so forty-five, forty-six hundred, um, boxes.
Boxes, right.
Yeah, so if, if you start distributing those among staff and parents, they're going to go fast, yeah.
Students only, it's two-point-five-four, and students and staff, it's one-point-nine.
Yeah, so we would, again, we would use them.
Yeah, you sure will use them.
So I, again, it would be up to the committee. I just, I, I think it's a struggle to get tests, and I think if we ask parents to, to, to do that, I think some parents will have access and others, and others won't, so that's the challenge.
Okay, so one comment I'd make is, if you're comparing, uh, different vendors, Bob, I don't know how other people feel or what the statistics are, but is one test more accurate than another? You know, should we be paying more attention to that? And also, do we have any COVID money left that we could spend on this, or do we have to go to the town for it? And do they have any COVID money left that they might share with us?
Um, I, we have, uh, COVID money, but it's allocated, um, sort of over the last, over the two fiscal years, this year and next, next year, so we could rearrange some, we'd have to rewrite the grant and do it that way. I'm not sure the town would buy into the mitigation, um, strategies, so I think we would have to have that conversation, um, with, with town, um, and, uh, and to see if they have COVID money and would want to spend their COVID money, um, on, on this. So, um, I, I, again, I, Mrs. Monaco, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Arthur?
Yeah, I would like to, um, support the idea of getting the tests and looking into it, i- if it's not in the budget, to talk with Ways and Means, to talk with the town, and see, you know, how we might fund it, um, either as a school district or as a, uh, or as the, the town, townwide. And, um, in terms of Mr. Kuna appropriately just brought up, we, you know, are we, you can order it, and what if it comes in three months? It's not going to be useful. So in my mind, the sooner the better, because there, there are obviously problems with getting these, and if there's somebody who's got a warehouse full of them, and we can get a pallet and sell some of them to a lab, I, I would like to see us pursue this to the extent that you can, and it sounds like you're already doing all the right things, so I would support that.
We are, but I guess now going, I thought we were getting nine thousand boxes, so I, I'm not sure, they're, they're, I'm not, we need two pallets, no, I won't say that, so.
Roger, I understand that you have raised your hand.
Um, I think Christine asked my question about using ARPA or CARES money, um, since that money was earmarked from, when it was, you know, granted to the towns and the school district for this kind of thing. I guess I would look there first before trying to find it in the, in the, uh, through requests for, in the budgets, but, uh, that requires some more discussion, so that was my point. Thanks.
Catherine?
Yeah, I, I do have, Bob, when you're negotiating, is there a, a committed, uh, delivery date when you, when, you know, you put it out to bid, they're giving you money? That's not part of our bid is saying that, is there a way to write that into it? Because, again, I think Martha had a, a, a valid point that if we order these and they show up three or four months later, what's the point? You know, we, we, we need to make sure that if we're committed to purchasing these, that we will get the supply within X amount of days of ordering, or we're stuck in the whole supply chain and the thing that we're seeing nationwide where it doesn't show up in time.
If I could just make some clarification, so this is not the town of Burlington going out for a request for bid, meaning, um, we're not saying, can someone provide us with X number of kits, and then we do a sealed bid and open those up. This is the state saying that they have gone spoke with vendors, these vendors are now on the state bid list and can sell to us directly, uh, as a public entity. So that means we don't have to go through the bid process. Um, the thing is, is that in order to meet the requirements of the state's bid, there are some minimums, and the price is already set, so there's no negotiations. Uh, and as far as the shipping, whatnot, um, again, there's no negotiations. Uh, it's kind of first come, first served, the price is set, and the minimums are in place.
So they have it in stock, is what you're saying?
Um, as of the communications that I've had with them.
Okay.
How long that stock lasts, I can't tell you.
All right, so, um, Dr. Conti, are you looking for any action this evening from the school committee on this matter, or are you just looking for input, or?
Just wanted to make sure you all, this is as clear as mud, and it could change tomorrow, so I, I sort of get that. But, uh, I think there was some confusion about the video, so I wanted to make sure we, we revisited that, and again, we're, we're adj- making adjustments, we're not necessarily ending our programs, and, um, I do think the, um, we're going to try to clarify, uh, the language through, um, by creating, um, scenarios for, for parents to, to read. I also think there are some individual situations, there always are, that they should make sure that they contact us, and we'll try to do our best to, um, work through them. I just think over the next few months, there's going to be a transition, um, unless we see another variant, there'll be a transition where, um, a lot of the, the care and the testing is going to be shifted towards, um, towards the home, um, like it is with other, contagious, um, respiratory illnesses and, and, and everything else. When that exactly occurs, again, I'm not an expert, but, uh, I just think we need to be, um, adjusting as, as we're seeing it, and the, the caseloads that we're seeing now to act as if we are treating this individually like we did before is, is just not manageable. So we'll see how this works, we'll give you an update in two weeks, and, uh, hoping we'll have, um, lower case numbers, and, um, we'll get feedback, uh, from Barbara and the, the nurses that it's, um, that it's, uh, more manageable.
With respect to purchasing the tests, however, is that something that you're going to pursue, or you're still discussing? Do you need the approval of this body, or is that something?
I, I'm going to pursue it, I think it's a big, um, it's a big ask, I think you know what I'm asking, and I think that I certainly need to follow up with Roger if that's the direction that we're going to go. Uh, I think if we're going to look to our own funds first, then, um, I want to discuss what, what the impact is of that, and, uh, as Mrs. Bond said, I just want to make sure that, um, if they're in stock and we can guarantee that they're going to put them on the plane or train or truck, um, that's a difference than, um, than what we experienced over Christmas break. So, um, I think we just need to know, again, if they arrive too much later, then, um, they won't necessarily be helpful to us, but I also know if we wait, um, that we won't have access, um, either. So I just think it's one of those things, Mr. Murphy, we're going to pursue, I'll get you all the information. It's probably easiest if we find the funding source, um, first, but I just, that's a big chunk for us to take out of our, um, out of our operating budget, and I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of it.
We don't meet again for another two weeks, so if time is of the essence, we're potentially, you're not getting the go-ahead authority to the degree that you need it until two weeks from now, unless you want some sort of a preliminary vote now. I would tend to agree with what Roger said, take a look to see what, if anything is available out of COVID funds, there was a fairly large pool, and I know we've all, we have plans for it, but, I mean, if, if it means shifting something out of the COVID fund use a year or two down the road versus directly affecting the current budget in this fiscal year, I think it's easier to, to, to work around the long term than the short term. So I guess that would be my opinion on that. Uh, the RFT obviously is, is another option, I believe that would also take a vote of this committee to go before the Ways and Means, um, and I think that's a viable option, but again, to the degree that you're going to need, um, a vote or authority of this board, if we don't do it this evening, we can't do it unless you call a special meeting, we can't do it for another two weeks.
I guess what I was thinking about is if we can solve the problem, but we get ourselves in trouble, uh, later on, uh, towards the end of the fiscal year, if, um, again, the RFT doesn't necessarily come off the, the table, and, and again, I just, I, so I haven't seen anyone saying they don't want me to pursue this purchase, so I just think I'll try to find, um, an expedient way to do that. I don't think the RFT is an expedient way, so we'll look to do that. I just wanted to make clear that the range of the purchase, again, is, is, is whatever, eighty to ninety thousand dollars, and, um...
Lot of money.
And it's a lot of money, so that's, that's all.
Today, the governor had a press conference and talked about how many tests were coming to the state and that he would make schools a priority. Do you expect to get any help from the state?
I, I do, I'm just wondering when, so I think it was twenty-four million tests, and I'm wondering, again, if they came at the end of the week, it would be great. Um, I'm just not sure, uh, when they're going to, um, get here. I do think at some point in the relatively near future, uh, manufacturing and distribution will catch up with need, um, and we'll probably find boxes of tests twenty years from now on some shelf somewhere, so I, I sort of get that, we're just not at that point, um, right now. So I'm just looking to bridge, um, where, where we are, and again, maybe it's even too late at this point, and maybe this, uh, conversation should have taken place a month ago, but I didn't, you know, we, we weren't predicting this, um, this variant at this time.
Well, I think the, the governor said there would be a, a rolling arrival of these tests, so...
My vote is for alphabetical, Mrs. Monaco.
Yes, I, I, well, no, let's skip over A and go straight to B, yeah. Maybe, maybe we could get some more information somehow, but, um, if we are to assume that we will not get enough help from the state, then I think moving forward is a, is a good idea. I think we need to get tests, but I'd like to get them from the state if we could.
Uh, yeah.
You know, maybe we wouldn't need to buy as many if we got help from the state. And again, like you said so many times, um, a month from now, we may not have a big need for tests if, if the predictions are correct, that once this Omicron variant dies down, there won't be too much going on, but I think that's, you know, fingers crossed for everyone.
Yeah, and I'm afraid to say anything at this point, um, and I'm on all those calls, Mrs. Monaco, and I have not heard that the tests are imminent. I think everyone is saying they're coming, and I've heard that for a while. So I, I just think it's, um, I'll look at that again, and if, again, if we feel, if we talk and they are going to get here sooner, again, I'm not anxious to spend the money, but I also think, um, having some tests that we can send home to students and for staff, um, I just think makes, makes sense. I just think makes sense.
All righty, Martha.
I'm not clear if you need us to take a vote on something tonight.
You can tell me, is anyone against the purchase, if I can figure it out? I'm not seeing anyone say that, I'm just saying it may cause problems down the, down the road. So I don't want anyone to act surprised. So we'll try to solve the problem, and if, that's all I'm saying. The timing of it is tricky, and we could order it and they could show up, and then we could get two pallets from the state at no cost, and people are going to yell. So I get that, I'm just trying to, I'm sure the tests will get used over time, given that we're going to have to learn to live with this moving forward. So I'm hearing the goal is no longer to eliminate, but to live with. So I think that's the, that's our challenge.
All righty, if there's nothing further on this item, we're going to move on. Number nine on our agenda is facilities and finance. The first one is the Burlington High School Standing Agenda Item. Is that Mr. Kuna, or?
In regards to the Burlington High School study that we're doing, I did have a meeting with the company over the Christmas break, or I'm sorry, holiday break. And I do have a meeting scheduled on Thursday afternoon this week to follow up. Like again, aggressive push in the month of January to get you all the information that we had discussed. So hopefully at our next meeting, I have more information for you, so.
Thank you. Martha?
So you're saying you still don't have the numbers that we need to make decisions? I guess I just want to make a statement that I've been on the school committee for seven years. This is the ninth year we've applied, ninth time in ten years that we've applied for the state to support us. So we've known we needed to do this project in Burlington. In the meantime, there's been a little bit of movement. The town has generously given us two capital warrant articles, where we've been able to hire people to do some of this preparatory work, which I think is called a feasibility study. But we still don't know anything. And we still have a high school where it could cost us millions of dollars if the heating system fails, and science labs that are from nineteen seventy-one, and no sprinklers in the building and things like that. And I'm not telling you, Mr. Kuna, anything you don't know. But I'm making a statement because I feel that we wait, and we wait, we mention it, and we talk about it, and we wait. And I want you to communicate to these people, you know, how long has it been that they've been working on this? Is it two years? Now, how long have they been working on this report?
Since May twelfth of this year.
Okay, so it's still just under a year? And yet, there's been delay after delay after delay. And again, I know we're in the middle of a pandemic. I understand if you don't have people to do the report, then you have to hire somebody or find somebody and train them and whatever. Whatever their reasons are, I feel like it's really important for us to move forward with the high school project. And I just want to keep, I want to say that because I've sat through a lot of meetings in seven years where we were going to work on it, and we're going to talk about it, and we're going to. And so we've made some progress on these, in these little ways. I'm glad we still have it as a standing agenda item, but a standing agenda item that makes no progress is really not terribly valuable. So I just had, I wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Anything further on the high school status? Seeing none, we'll move on to item B, Fox Hill School Building Committee Standing Agenda Item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the full committee, we met with the MSBA. We had that follow-up meeting that was requested by the building committee, which you all were in attendance for. The meeting was initially scheduled prior to winter break, but I think they were a little bit backed up and they pushed it until last Thursday. So we went through the list of questions that was generated by the building committee. And the answers, from my perspective, weren't necessarily what we hoped. But I, I just want to share the facts with the committee, and then we can decide what to do and how to move forward. So Mr. Murphy, I'm not sure, again, you were, you gave up your time. And so if you want to make some comments first, and then it'll save you from correcting me.
Sure. I mean, that was an accurate summation, we did have the discussion. The bottom line is, they have identified, Dr. Ak, they, they set their, their room sizes at twenty-three students per classroom. So, which is a fair degree higher than what our common practice is. So we're starting a little bit in the negative because of that. In addition, their enrollment projections show a fairly substantial decrease in Burlington's student population over the next ten years, which I don't know enough about the the way that those are done and the data that was used and the formulas that they use. But it was a little surprising to me, frankly, just given the nature of what things have done over the past ten to fifteen to twenty years. But nevertheless, when you're playing in their court, you play under their rules, and this is what they've done. So because of the fact that they forecast a significant decrease in our student population, in addition to the fact that they feel that we're, we should be planning schools at a rate of, I'm talking elementary schools now, at the rate of twenty-three students to a classroom, they say we have too many schools in our town right now. That essentially, they would agree to participate with us in the construction of a new school. That would be a four-hundred-and-thirty-student school, and that school would replace both the Fox Hill and the Pine Glen. So were we to take them up on that, on that offer, we've got two older schools that are already overcrowded, we're essentially eliminating those two to put a new school on. But we would have to have a pretty significant redistricting across town to fit all of our students, elementary-age students into three schools rather than four. And that would have a ripple effect right across the town. It's not going to be a case where we're trying to stuff both schools all into the Fox Hill. This would have to be spread out amongst the Memorial and the Fox Hill as well.
So, Mr. Chair, just to that point, at your seats, and I can read it for people listening. If you look under the post-construction enrollments by school, you can see the consolidated model that the MSBA is moving forward. So again, the consolidated model that they're proposing, which would take place, say, seven or eight years from now, I just want to make sure I say that again, that's seven or eight years now in the future, is what they would say is, the, they would, again, close Pine Glen. And their consolidated model would take Francis Wyman from currently five-hundred-and-eighteen students. Their consolidated model would take Francis Wyman to six-hundred-and-thirty-five students. The consolidated Fox Hill would be four-hundred-and-eighty students. And then the consolidated Memorial, currently at basically four-hundred-and-nine students, four-hundred-and-ten students. The consolidated model for Memorial would go to four-hundred-and-eighty students. So unlike when we did the Memorial project, and when we discussed sort of rebuilding Memorial, it seemed to be just about Memorial, then, again, I know we had to redistrict, but we would have to redistrict anyway. This project or their current process, their current grant process, means rebuilding the Fox School with MSBA as a partner is about changing the elementary, the entire elementary configuration that we have. So again, it would be a beautiful new Fox Hill at roughly the same size as Memorial at about four-hundred-and-eighty, five-hundred students. And then it would push Francis Wyman up to about six-hundred-and-thirty-five, six-hundred-and-forty students. That's if you accept their fertility rate-based enrollment projections and their class sizes of twenty-three, which is what they model. Again, there's nothing inherently bad about the MSBA model, is what I want to say, that's just what they do, they apply it to everybody. It just may not be a good match with this community and what you're all thinking. And I think, Mr. Murphy, on the call, the, one of the MSBA, I think it was Diane, said the grant program isn't for everybody. So I think that's a comment, a comment that we made. I think we asked every possible question that you could have in your head. Can we just pay for more ourselves? Can we just take the money? Can we use Pine Glen as swing space and then just keep using Pine Glen and not tell anybody? Can we trade the money for Fox Hill, for the high school? We really asked, I think, a lot of questions, and they're saying that they would, they need to define program. They said now's the appropriate time for us to talk about enrollment, that's, so that's what this time period is. We did double-check, Bob, we sent back in, they asked us to look at classroom usage that we had, so we sent back in that information, so we made sure they had accurate information. And they did suggest, and Bob, my understanding is their board meeting is now potentially delayed until April? March?
There's one in March and one in April.
One in March and one in April, and they did suggest that maybe we ask for an extension until, until April for us to have this, for us to have this conversation, if the board needs, you know, more time and we need to involve other communities. So, I'm sorry, other town committees or other town, sorry, I'm getting a little tired, so that's okay.
Catherine?
When, Bob, when you reevaluated the space, just to see if there was any kind of, I guess, miscommunication to them, did you find any discrepancies that you were able to share that would make a difference? I mean, again, I don't think we want to go to the three-school model anyway, but I just, I'm curious.
There's no discrepancies on what we had labeled or what MSBA currently had presented to them, as far as the number of classrooms. That does affect the conversation that we're having, but a future conversation could be the use of that space or the use of the additional spaces. You know, I know we have programs such as Lab, DSC, and so forth in our buildings. So those were taken into consideration, the number of classrooms is accurately reported. But again, a future conversation would have to work into those other programs that are in our buildings.
Excuse, could you explain that further, excuse me, through the chair?
Sure.
Because, let me just clarify, my question is, I have always assumed that when we ask, when we look at building a building, it will include the programs that are in there, whether they're Lab or in-district programs. And I want to know if MSBA is counting those classrooms and those programs and those students as part of their figuring.
Okay, so the answer is, we have, I'll use Pine Glen as an example. The number of classrooms, K through five, that we currently have enrolled is the number that's reported and MSBA has on file. We have more classroom space in Pine Glen than just those classrooms. So the other classroom space that's being used for other programs is also noted to MSBA, but not included in our classroom count. So the classroom count is accurate according to the number of classrooms that we have in Francis Wyman, Pine Glen, and Memorial. The additional space is also noted, but again, not counted in our classroom count. So if we were to move forward with MSBA, my comment was, then we would have to look at what other space is needed for a new building, for additional programming.
Again, it's just a different mindset and a different model. So applying that to our current numbers, we have roughly, I think, ninety-seven elementary homerooms, if you want to think about it that way, K to five, across four elementary schools. The MSBA says, in their thinking, their modeling, we should have seventy-eight, I believe, was the number that they gave us. So that would be nineteen fewer homerooms. Again, that's if all the kids were evenly distributed, that never happens. But I'm just saying, just looking at it numerically, they would say we don't need to have as many classrooms as we currently, as we currently have. So it's, we would, we would see that, that would be reduced. So the conversation that we need to have, and we have two warrant articles that the school committee is proposing. There's a warrant article that keeps us in the grant program, and that is language that we are required to use by the MSBA. And then there's a warrant article that is, allows us to continue to make progress on Fox Hill without the MSBA. And again, I think that if, I don't think we need that vote tonight, but I think we need to explain maybe what those situations are, depending on how this committee feels. Bob, we have a building committee scheduled for next?
Next week on Tuesday, so January eighteenth at seven p.m.
So it may make sense to sort of have that conversation and then have, and then I think our next school committee meeting is going to be ahead of town meeting. I think town meeting, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there. What?
Twenty-four?
It's not being postponed?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so.
I mean, if it's postponed, I haven't heard about it.
Okay, so maybe I'm, I could be off. I'm just saying it may make sense, I'm not sure what makes sense, so we all need to have that conversation now. I have some thoughts, but.
We could certainly post a school committee meeting for, before town meeting, if we feel we need it. If we're going to be down there anyway, so.
Can I say something?
Sure.
As I sit here and listen, and I read everything you sent out, the comment that the grant program isn't for everyone really kind of strikes a nerve with me because having been through using the program in, for both the Memorial and the Marshall Simons, I believe that their process has changed and that their modeling has changed. And I think perhaps it just doesn't work for Burlington anymore based on these changes. And just so there's no question in anyone's mind that might be watching, this board has already voted unanimously to maintain four elementary schools. And I don't think any one of us has changed our minds. So the idea of closing Pine Glen and squishing all the kids into three other schools, I just don't think is right for the town of Burlington. Our educational system is based on a whole lot of things that we've built over years. And I don't, I don't see us bowing to that change. And also, and Eric makes a good point when he refers to seven or eight years out. If we, to maintain what we already have, if we need to build a school without SBA, we can do it a whole lot sooner and have our, our space that we desperately need a whole lot sooner. So I just wanted to make sure that there was no question in anyone's mind where I stood on that.
Along those lines, if, were we to choose to forego MSBA partnership for the elementary level, that doesn't preclude us from going back and trying to get in the queue for the high school. I think we're at about a forty percent reimbursement bracket, give or take. So, and if an elementary school costs forty million to build nowadays, give or, give or take a couple, that would be, that would mean the town would have to bond that entire amount as opposed to only sixty percent of the amount, which is not an insignificant ask from the town. So I think we have to have some discussion with them about that. However, we would still, like I said, be able to get in the queue for the high school assistance and get the reimbursement there because we're not dealing with the questions about enrollment and things of that nature. Martha?
I have a lot of different comments about different parts of this, but I'd just like to comment on what you just said, Mr. Murphy, I have a lot of different comments about the different parts of this, but I'd just like to comment on what you just said, Mr. Murphy, that we can go back to the state for the high school project, and that would be really nice. But they've already told us that we don't meet their criteria eight times. And I am not willing to just wait. So, I would like to see us open up the ideas and think about what is it that's going to be feasible? Or, I don't know what the right words are. The MSBA is telling us that they're going to tell us how to run our school district, that they're going to change the values and the priorities that we've set. We think it's important that we have small class sizes. And I know there are other towns where they've supported schools that going to twenty-three students per class is lowering the class size. And that, that's great. And I understand that they can't give us a different number. But that combined with them not willing to let us build the extra space that we think we need. For example, we, we got, we worked with them for the Memorial School and they said that we weren't going to have an increase in enrollment, and we did. In the day that Memorial opened, it was too full. And they were wrong in their projections. So, I don't have a lot of confidence in their projections. And that's not just because I know better, because I don't know anything about how you make those kind of projections. But we have another company that did projections. And, and you know, I'm not great at reading these things, but the one we, I have in front of me says that in the next ten years, there's a two-point-two percent perhaps increase overall. It's not a big increase, but it means that we're not going to be going down two hundred students. And for us to agree to go with the grant program, if they're not going to allow us to then add to it what we believe we need, is just kicking the can down. I, I don't know what the right phrase is. Kicking the can down the road, putting our blinders on, to say that we're going to go back, and we already went back to them for the high school. We're going to hear in April, except it might be delayed this year, I heard. Maybe we'll hear in May if they accept the high school. So, I feel like we, we need to have a conversation tonight. And, and I, I think waiting two weeks doesn't work because town meeting is, unless town meeting is delayed, but maybe somebody could find out, like, while they're listening to this meeting. If it's not delayed, we don't have another meeting scheduled. And to squeeze one in for a half an hour before town meeting, to me, doesn't work. I'm willing to come for a special meeting if, if we feel we need it. We have two articles that we've sent to town meeting, and I think it's very confusing. I know it's very confusing. I've talked to a couple of town meeting members who don't feel like they understand why there's two warrants. I thought it was pretty clear. One warrant is if we are able to go with the MSBA grant program, this is the wording we need in order to move forward. This is the numbers. I believe, Mr. Kuna, am I correct, that the, the one-point-five million is the numbers that the MSBA said we need to ask the town to commit to? And if we don't go through the process, but they're not even agreeing to let us in the process program yet, and we haven't decided if we want to go ahead with it. But we could go to town meeting saying if we're in the grant process, then we'll go ahead with it and leave that article. The second article, if we're not going to use the MSBA, and there's, like I said, there's multiple issues going on here. If we're not going to use the MSBA grant program for Fox Hill, it's true, we could build it quicker on our own, but I feel that we should start the, the high school program. And so, maybe we shouldn't be putting in a request for the Fox Hill in January, but putting in a request for the high school renovations in May. Are we going to even know what the numbers are in May? And it's, so it's really complex. I, I just want to go back for a minute to the MSBA telling us that, that they're not going to accept. For them to not consider the programming that we have offered in our schools as part of their numbers of classrooms doesn't make sense. For them to say that they're going to add students, that they're going to tell us how to distribute our students, that the class sizes is not, you know, important. I, I just, you know, it will affect all of our, all of our elementaries. When Memorial was accepted and it was wrong, it only affected the Memorial community in general. We did end up having to redistrict, so it affected everyone. But what they're proposing is they're going, it would affect all of our elementary schools. And we'd have to do it their way, and we wouldn't be able to add on to it, even though there's, you know, these vague things about, well, if we said we wanted a pool too, we could do that if we just paid for it ourselves. But they're telling us if we want to build more classrooms, they're not going to let us do that and reimburse us. They just wouldn't give us the money. So, I saw Dr. Conti, I'll stop here, but I'm sure I'll have more things to say later.
Given this time, not to interrupt, just to clarify, I, I think they, they make a clear distinction of the definition of enrollment. So, they will build space for programming. They will build space for lab. They will include that in there. But their definition of enrollment is how many classrooms that we need, and they won't come off of that. So, what we asked is, like you can do at a high school, and I'll use sort of a, sorry, a bit of a far-fetched example. If we wanted to build a high school, then we would have the same conversation about enrollment. We would size the school based on the enrollment in terms of classrooms. If we wanted to say that we had a, a lab high school program, they would include that in the space. They just may not reimburse us completely for, for that space. But what they won't come off of is the, is the classrooms that are dedicated to sort of the core program and core enrollment. We could even say we want to put a swimming pool on the high school, and they would say, great, you can put a swimming pool on the high school, but you can pay for that yourself.
But they won't let us pay for extra classrooms.
Correct. So, what we asked is can we build your whatever-size school and then just say we'll pay, instead of a forty percent reimbursement, as an example, we'll take a twenty-five percent reimbursement and then just build a larger project, like adding a swimming pool? And they said, no. They make a clear distinction between sort of a feature and an enrollment-driven decision. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the two people who are on that call. We asked that question specifically. So, the enrollment number is the enrollment number. They will say if you have a developmental skills classroom like we have, they will gladly provide space for that. They're not limiting any of that. They just want to account for classrooms is, is essentially what they, what they want to do. So, I think that's the challenge. So, and, and Mrs. Simon, with the, with the procurement, I think some people say, can you just start and then sort of at the end, they won't, it'll be sort of the horses out of the barn, whatever, and we're all thinking, it's, the project will be so far along, they can't change their mind at that point. Please remember that what they asked town meeting to vote on is the total cost of the project, not just the town's contribution. So, using Mr. Murphy's example, if the elementary school costs forty million dollars, the town has to approve expending forty million dollars. And then the state will come in and reimburse whatever they feel that is reimbursable. If they don't feel we upheld our end of the bargain, then the town will pay all forty, all forty million dollars. So, it's not like if we're splitting thirty million to the town, ten million to the state, we don't just appropriate thirty million. We have to appropriate all forty million. So, I, I think they're, the processes they have in place are to protect the state from overbuilding, and I think that's fine. I just think the grant program as designed doesn't fit your current elementary model. If you want to move away from that, we'll make it work. I have no doubt that we'll make it work. But I think that's the, that's the decision. And just one last thing, we could schedule, we could post a school committee meeting for next Tuesday. So, we could have a building committee meeting and then convene a school committee meeting after that for you all to vote if you don't want to do that right now, if you want some time to think about it. So, that would give us enough time to post a meeting. You're all going to be in attendance anyway. So, we could post a school committee with a single agenda item.
Yeah, I was going to say next Tuesday, we've got the Ways and Means Subcommittee, and we have Mr. Portis.
No. Tomorrow night is when?
Oh, tomorrow night, I'm sorry.
And my, my other concern is that whatever we decide, whether we want to go forward with both warrant articles or one warrant article, that we need time to explain it because it is very confusing. And clearly, people are going to look at that and say, well, why, why would we turn down free money? And I've heard that said to me several times in the last month or two. How could we just turn down free money? And I feel like we need to make the argument that it's not free money. It's money that comes with lots of strings attached, which involve changing our entire educational system in Burlington. And that we, it's our job as the school committee to make that decision. And I would like to have money from the MSBA, but I also think that Mrs. Monaco is right. It seems that their program is very different than it was last time we used it.
I can tell you that last time, there wasn't any discussion about twenty-three kids in the classroom. We wound up underbuilding not because they expand, they, they had a higher per-classroom ratio than we did. It was because they miscalculated the.
The numbers.
The enrollments.
Enrollment numbers.
So, that, that is, I mean, it's been ten years since Memorial came online, so.
So, it's, it's something that we kind of were counting on. It's something that we heard last spring that we were accepted into this program, and we were like, great, we're going to get some reimbursement. And I don't think that if we want to keep our school system, the, the quality and the way we want to do it, I don't think it's free money. And, and it's, you know, as Dr. Conti said to me earlier, if, if we decide to go with the model that MSBA wants, he will make it work. And I believe that, and I know that he could do that. I don't think it would be as good of an education. And I, I don't hear from anyone on the committee that we want to change that model to match what MSBA wants. So, I don't know if it's, I mean, should we go to town meeting and ask for this MSBA warrant? Because there's still one more round of questions we're going to ask?
Well, this is our last, our only chance to go before town meeting until next May. I'm sorry. I mean, this is going to be our only turn, opportunity to get before town meeting until, until May. So, to the degree that we need approval for something, I think it has to be done, obviously, in a few weeks. Like any warrant article, town meeting approves a warrant article, but the, the money is not spent if the purpose of the warrant article doesn't go forward for whatever reason. Buy a new fire truck, then you decide, well, we don't need it. The money just goes, goes back into the pot. It doesn't get appropriated. So, what we have on the table, two alternate possibilities, depending on what route we wind up going. To me, you know, if in the next two weeks, we don't have sufficient time as a, as a body and, and the building committee's involvement to, to fully discuss it and, and figure out our options of what's the best way to go, to my, in my mind, there's no reason we couldn't go to town meeting and just say that. These are two options that we need to be passed at this stage of the game in order to move forward. If we choose to move forward, the money won't be appropriated and obviously spent unless we make a decision and then, and then go from there. So, you know, I, I, I understand it's confusing for some people, and some people don't understand. But, you know, if we don't get whatever appropriation that we feel that we need in January, then we can't do that again until May, and we've lost another four or five months in the process.
You want to get both? You want to get both passed?
I, to me, and, 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 you know, I don't see, I don't see anything wrong unless we can come to some sort of a consensus between ourselves and the building committee and the town financial people and everything between now and, and town meeting, going forward, explaining this to town meeting, at town meeting, and saying, look, you know, we just found all this out three weeks ago. We're trying to work our way through it. This could go this way. It could wind up going that way. We need formal appropriation for both options. And once we decide which way we're going, then we'll, we'll go in that direction. The other one will, will become moot. I don't, I don't see why we can't do that. I mean, frankly, I agree with everything I think that's been said about, you know, maybe we're going to have to walk away from the MSBA money on this elementary school project. But I don't feel comfortable making that decision as a school committee member until I get some feedback and input from the town's financial team. Because this is going to be more of a hit than they had, had budgeted for. And, and I want to make sure that we can handle a forty-million-dollar bond as opposed to a twenty-eight-million-dollar bond, or whatever, whatever the numbers were going to be. And so, I think that's important input that we need. I think we have to have a discussion with the building committee next week when that meeting's been set up for next Friday, I mean, next Tuesday, to get input from those folks. So, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made before we, we figure out which way we're going to go on this. And, and the timing is such that we don't have a lot of time before town meeting. So, unless a consensus develops very quickly from all involved, I would, I would be in favor of going to town meeting with an either-or. Make it very clear to them that we won't touch either one of the, a nickel in either one of the warrant articles until, you know, decisions were made, how we're going to be moved forward with this. But if we don't do these now, we can't do them again until May, and, and we're going to, we're going to potentially lose some time.
I mean, I don't know if you remember, I'm the person who suggested we have the two articles because I didn't want to wait if we didn't end up going with the MSBA. So, I, I do see the urgency, and yet, so I, I guess if people feel we could meet next week after the school, the building committee meets, that might, that would give us less than a week, but close to a week before town meeting to send out some communications. And hopefully, someone could speak on the town meeting floor to explain what's going on.
I think we've got to loop Ways and Means into this. I know Roger's on the call. And we've got to loop in the town's financial team, Mr. Denizio and Paul and, and, I mean, we got, we need input from all those people as well.
Is that something that you and Dr. Conti can maybe do? Or who is the person to do it, to meet with the town side and?
We have a budget meeting, it's the next Wednesday morning?
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth of, for guidelines. So, we can at least informally kind of pick their brains at that point. That'll be, we're all going to be sitting in the same room. It's not necessarily the subject of the discussion, but, but we could at least have an opportunity to talk to them.
And Mr. Denizio's on the building committee, so he's well aware of the conversation. So, he'll be there, you know, when we, when we have that conversation. They have money set aside for both Fox Hill and the high school. If we use all of that money for Fox Hill, then there's, again, then that's how that would sort of work. So, so I think having that conversation is important. Bob, just another sort of factor, and I think everything you've discussed is fine, but just another factor. We have a currently an active statement of interest for Burlington High School submitted.
Correct.
And they normally make that decision in December, but they're behind because of everything. And they're telling us they're going to tell, they'll notify us whether the high school is in the pipeline in April?
For 2021, statement of interest for the high school is incorrect. Not in December, where we notified, and they said approximately April, but did not give a defined date.
So, maybe before May town's meeting, just again, another factor in to consider is, I'm an eternal optimist. Let's say the high school gets, gets in. Do, Mr. Murphy, if both of those warrants are approved, then do we shift our resources at that time? And so, I think that's, that's also in play as well. We clearly have need for both. And, and again, I don't want to forget Pine Glen in this as well. So, but I'm saying we clearly have need for both of our schools that are sort of late sixties, nineteen-seventy construction. So, we do have an active statement of interest for Burlington High School moving forward. Mrs. Simon, the, the, the feedback from the MSBA is they're aware of the high school project. They've been out here. They're aware of the need. They did say it's a very good project. They say it is more than a repair. We asked very specifically, would we have a better chance if we said we want to build a completely new high school and not renovate this one? Do they not want to renovate the building? And I think they distinctly said, given the cost of a new. And I think they distinctly said, given the cost of a new high school, they would actually like to renovate. So the renovation isn't counting against us. And they did say the, the sort of decision-making comes around. And so I actually thought they were more positive about the, about the high school than I've heard them in a while. So we're not off their radar. I think they have their process, and I think they'll go through that process. And it may be worth another conversation with them about the, not just about Fox Hill, but about some of the town's overall needs. And maybe there's, if they have more of the information or more of the global information that they can make a better, a better decision. So again, I know you're skeptical, and I appreciate that, but I just think it's maybe worth some outreach, some outreach there as well. Bob?
If I may, I just add some information. A statement I made was questioned, so I'd like to try to clarify it. I used Pine Glen as an example for the MSBA's count of classrooms. I'd like to say that if we look at Pine Glen as a whole, every single year, we update the state with the number of classrooms that we have, what the building looks like, our building maps. MSBA this year, for this Fox Hill project, asked for these maps again. In their count for enrollment, they are specifically looking at the number of K through five classrooms for this part of the study. So while they're looking at the maps, they know that we currently have a gymnasium, currently we have auditorium, currently we have, you know, bathrooms and DSC classrooms and whatnot. And I made the example of DSC. They are not subtracting or minimizing the fact that DSC students or any other students or any other spaces aren't valuable. At this part of the study, all they are looking at for enrollment only is the number of current classrooms. Then in the next part is where we look at, how many guidance offices do we need? How big is our cafeteria? Do we have one principal office and an assistant principal office? How many bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera? Again, this part of the study is strictly the number of K through five current classrooms in the building. That's it.
And what I wanted to clarify, and what we talked to them about at the meeting, and I think, was it 90, is 97 the number that they said we have of classrooms elementary-wide? Currently, currently? The point that I was trying to make with them is that we have 97 classrooms, but I'm just making up a number, don't hold me to this. Say 10 of them were allocated for lab programs at various schools. So in my mind, we have only 87 classrooms, because 10 of them are used for other than our own K through five student population. So that's the main thing that I was trying to get, point to them, is that because we have 97 physical classrooms, with our current academic use that they're all put to, we don't have 97 classrooms that go towards our K through five enrollment. Because 10 of them are used for the lab program or whatever other, and I, and again, I'm making up that number. So that was the main point that I just, when they take their 23 kids to a classroom plus 97 classrooms, this is how much space you need. If we only have 87, I was, my mind was they'd allow us to build an extra 10 classrooms because, because of the use that we put them to. So I, I'm not quite sure how that all plays out. I, I know we've probably disclosed to them how many physical classrooms there are, but if we, but if we've designated use of some of those classrooms to lab or ELL or whatever other uses they might be put to, my hope was that they wouldn't count those as available space as they do their calculations, and maybe allow us to build some more classrooms onto the new building to allow for, for that use that we, that we're already putting space to. So again, I, whether it...
Is that accurate?
Through the chair, it is very accurate. Again, I hope I don't butcher this, but through the terms of the MSBA, K through five classrooms is what they're asking for right now. We may have learning spaces, class spaces, learning four-by-four walled areas that we call something else, or we call a classroom or whatnot. They specifically are asking for K through five classrooms in this part of the study. Other learning spaces, building spaces are evaluated later on in the project.
Excuse me, through the chair?
Yes.
I misunderstood what Dr. Conti just said then. I thought Dr. Conti said that they counted, they said we could have, we have 97 homeroom classrooms, K to five, which did not include the DSC and the other lab programs, which is opposite of what I heard you say.
Again, I, they're just looking at, we have to provide a schematic every year with the number of classrooms we have and sort of, what they were looking at is purely enrollment, homeroom classes is what they were looking at.
Right.
Mr. Murphy asked, we have other programs in our buildings. Can't we get a bigger building, essentially? And what they said is, not based on your enrollment. They will build spaces for all these other programs. They will honor, if we want to have lab programs, DSC, if we want to have all those programs, they'll honor it, but they won't build any other homeroom classrooms for that.
So when they say they'll build us 78 classrooms across the town, that does not include the lab programs.
Correct.
So we would also have the lab programs.
But, but they, that doesn't mean they're eliminating those programs. That just means, when Bob said, when we move to the next phase, they'll ask us, what specialized programs do you have? What collaboratives do you have?
Okay.
If we had a program, they would, they would include it there, but they're not changing the, the enrollment, the number of classrooms that they are projecting that we need for enrollment.
So I would like to request that when you folks meet with the budget people on the town side, that you discuss the high school project as well as the Fox Hill project. And that we should not assume that MSBA is going to approve it, although that would be great. I'm not against working with the MSBA if they would support our educational system. And I also want to clarify, if we're not voting tonight on the warrant articles, I would like to know if we can have a special meeting next week, as you proposed, after the building committee meeting, and maybe move the building committee meeting up a half an hour? I don't know if it's possible, because there's all kinds of other committees that are meeting. And we can have this conversation also with our schools, the Ways and Means Subcommittee as well, and see what they have to say about it.
I think we can do all that. Well, again, I'm not sure moving up to, we'll check at the time, but I'm saying we'll certainly meet with the Ways and Means Subcommittee. We'll have this, have this conversation. And again, there's no money being expended at this point, and I think that would be the conversation with, with town meeting. And the costs that we're talking about, I think, are some of the costs that are planned. We're certainly within that realm. I just think it depends what pathway that we choose to, we choose to go. So a suggestion was made by MSBA, and we may get to reach that conclusion ourselves with needing more time, is they postponed their February board meeting until March, and they have another one scheduled in April, again, which may get pushed until May. They did suggest that we, we could ask for an extension in this block of time that we have allotted in the process, and they, they really hinted that they would, they would approve that extension if we needed to have more community conversation.
Just add, the time is of the essence on the, on the, on the town meeting vote, only, frankly, if we're going with the MSBA program, because we needed that approval in hand to move to the next level. If the consensus is going to be that we're not going to request their, their assistance on the, with the elementary project, then there is, I don't know that we're going to be that penalized by waiting until May to, to address a warrant article. I, I mean, most of those costs are for, you know, preliminary stuff that the MSBA wanted to have in place before they, they moved us to the next level.
What do we gain by having a postponement? I don't, they're not going to change the number 23 to 18.
No.
Because we wait a month, so what's the point?
We may know the high school project outcome by then.
But so what?
You mean the financial numbers?
How does that affect the Francis, the Fox Hill program?
I think it doesn't necessarily.
If we took ourselves out of contention because we can't, because we can't go along with their guidelines, that doesn't affect whether or not they approve the high school or doesn't. I mean, maybe we're better off getting out of contention, because then they'll say, oh, well, they didn't get that because they wanted smaller class sizes.
I just think we need to have that conversation. I think that what they said is they rarely approve two projects in the same community. And again, there are some cases where that occurred, but I do think we, we just need to have that conversation. So the reason for delaying, Mrs. Monaco, would just be to give us a chance to have more conversation, and maybe it's not needed. So I just wanted to say that was an option that they provided. Again, they kept reminding us, or I think they kept reemphasizing that now is the time to have the enrollment conversation. They have, haven't had this settled in other communities, and then they've moved forward in the process, and then it really bogged down the project, because you can imagine when we were going to design the building and they're designing it for three, and you said, hey, wait a minute.
Yep.
Then that would cause big problems at that, at that time. So they're appreciating honestly that we're pushing back. It's the appropriate time for us to push back. And I just think their position is they need to apply the same standard to every community in the Commonwealth. And, and so that's, that's their, that's their position. I do want to make sure we reiterate of people who are listening, no one here is questioning the need for a new Fox Hill. So I'm saying, I think that's sort of generally accepted. All of this conversation is about the pathway to get there, and, and I think we have some choices, which aren't necessarily a bad thing, but what outcomes you want to have and the speed that you want the project done, and I think there are a bunch of different factors that we've covered tonight. But no one's questioning whether we need a new building.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I also wanted to mention for people who are listening, that there are other towns that have funded their own school building projects without the MSBA. So that does happen as well, for a variety of reasons. Again, we would prefer to have their financial support, but it isn't looking to me like they want to support our educational system. They want us to change our system to match what they want us to be doing. And they have their reasons, but I...
I just, yes, Bob? Just quickly, if I could add on to the comment of the extension. MSBA is very process-driven, and dates and times they like to stick to. So our feasibility window is 270 days. So on February 22nd is when our feasibility window ends. If we don't decide to accept or approve or negotiate with their enrollment numbers, we will need to apply for an extension anyways in order to keep that process going, because the window will close on that time. That was it, so.
All right. Are we going to what?
Yes. Lunch update?
All right. School lunch update.
Nicole, you still with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi there, thanks for waiting.
Hi, Nicole.
Again, I think there's two parts to the lunch update. There's a financial part, which Nicole can do. I think just an actual update, you all know we're feeding kids back in classrooms at elementary school, and we've made some adjustments at the, at the middle school, at the middle school as well. And again, I just want to thank the cafeteria workers for being so flexible. And again, we're having to cover all those lunches again, so I think everyone, teachers, administration have all, the overused word pivoted to get us through this cert. So that's sort of the, the operational part of lunches. Nicole, the, didn't, did I just read the federal government expanded the reimbursements for, for school lunches?
Yes, so our reimbursements the past few months have, have actually been higher than than typical. And then when, when we go over the revolving fund summary, which I think is next on the agenda, you'll see that we're in the black.
In the black for school lunches?
Yes.
No way. Roger, don't get used to that.
It's, it's not really all that legitimate, because there was a carryover for some COFRED money that preloaded the account to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So it's in the black because of past, past activities, not current ones.
Mr. Chair, I think it makes sense to get to talk more about the school lunch when we do the revolving account update. The May town meeting warrant articles approved, approval, again, the warrant articles are in your, are in your packet. We just had that conversation. Could we table this until next Tuesday night? I just think that makes sense.
As, as if, we just have to have, have voted them before town meeting does, so.
Why don't we vote them, and we could, we could choose to withdraw one or not?
Do that, too.
I'll postpone them. I don't care, it's late.
If we're meeting next week, maybe we could just decide then.
That's fine. I mean, we've done it before on, we, we meet at town meeting for a half hour before town meeting, and formally vote a warrant article.
Yeah.
Usually when there's a placeholder, that we fill the blanks in and we vote it. So that's not the, that's not an unheard-of practice. So we have that opportunity as well as next week, if we post a meeting for next week. In the meantime, we'll try to get some feedback from the town about, you know, the financial viability of various options, and we can kind of revisit it.
Through the chair?
Yes, Bob.
Just a question for my own clarification. So one of them, the second one, is actually a placeholder that has a TBD for the dollar amount. Part of me says the fund should be the same. The other part of me says that potentially it could be a lower or a higher number. Again, we have recommendations, and the numbers provided in the backup are what other towns have spent recently to source that. But since we haven't gone out to bid and really haven't shopped it, besides the information provided, then, like you said, we don't know the exact number. So that being said, the question I would have is, is that, you know, for any future conversations for next week or even tomorrow with Ways and Means Subcommittee, you know, I know that's going to come up, and I think that would be my response as well, too, just going on what other towns have spent as a clear recommendation for the funds requested.
So again, just to, I'm sorry to repeat, but Article One is, the backup is from MSBA's prior projects from surrounding communities. Bob, you're recommending we put 1.5 as the, as the amount on Article Two, which is the non-MSBA. Obviously, the, the cost of the project management and some of the other costs would be the same. So, and again, the way this works is we would pay, we pay everything upfront anyway, and then the MSBA reimburs us, reimburses the community for eligible expenses. So I don't think the costs would differ. We would just get, we would just get no reimbursement. So that would be the, the challenge. So again, I think that would be one amendment. I still would think that we need to put off the vote until after the building committee meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. There's nothing further on that? Budget calendar?
Yes, sir. Nicole, here we go. Sorry, budget calendar. Sorry, Nicole, go ahead.
Through the chair?
Yep.
So you have the budget calendar before you. There is, we did add one special meeting, which is on March 15th. The past couple of years, we've sort of pushed, in conjunction with town, that the guideline conversation, and thus sort of compressing our, our number of meetings, which we can get all of our budget meetings heard. So this, adding this special meeting on March 15th will still allow for four meetings through which the committee can hear each... meetings, through which the committee can hear each, each department's presentation, and then one additional meeting on April twenty-sixth for capital articles.
April twenty-sixth, or, oh, I see, yep.
Anybody have any questions or conflicts or issues with the proposed budget schedule for the school committee budget review?
I'm just confused about the, like, what's January twenty-four to February four and February seven to eighteen?
No, it's, those are, that's when the staff are working on the, putting the budgets together. And we, we don't get the budget until March eighth, when we, when the superintendent presents it. Am I correct on that?
Yes, through the chair, so the gaps that you see there are just weekends, Chris?
So this is just informational, we don't need a vote on this, do we, Dr. Conti?
I don't, we haven't voted in the past on the budget calendar, so just the date that you would be added would be the March fifteenth date, so.
So that meeting will be posted in due course, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Further on that, what was that, what did you say earlier about the revolving accounts?
I thought that if there was a, the school lunch specifics financially, we could just incorporate into the conversation with the revolving account summary. So Nicole, anything outstanding that stood out to you on the revolving account summary?
No, if, if I remember, the report that has been presented, there's no accounts currently in deficit for, for this one.
So regarding the school lunch account, it seems like it's sort of random when and whether they reimburse us, so is there a prediction now for the rest of the year that you know that, or is it, they still haven't told you?
Through the chair, I'm not, I'm not trying to understand what you're asking, Martha.
Well, you said that there's-
A number of additional or increased reimbursements this fall. And I, I'm not clear if there's now a new reimbursement formula, so we are getting more money on a monthly basis, and we can expect that going forward? Or is that a one-time thing? Do you, did they give you any information on how we're gonna be reimbursed and at what rates going for the rest of the year?
I actually, I do have some questions into this state regarding the reimbursement, just to see, to sort of answer some of those questions that you were just asking. So I'll have more information for the committee next month.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from, from Nicole on this matter?
This is Roger, the chair.
Yes, Roger.
Oh, just, I think it's great that, that the school lunch budget is in the red, and it looks like even the expenditures versus receipts are pretty well balanced, so that's great, and it's nice to hear that the reimbursement rate may have crept.
We lost the tail end of you there, Roger.
Are there any? What's that?
Pathway through what you were saying, so I don't know whether-
I'm sorry. I'll try again. So Nicole, are there any unusual expenditures in the revolving accounts? I mean, some of the expenditure numbers are kind of large.
I guess you'd have to be a little bit more specific, is, is there one account that you had in mind?
Well, the after-school program, this almost seven-hundred thousand to eight-hundred thousand, may just be, you know, a, a monthly cycle of income payments versus expenditures. But I guess I didn't expect school choice to go down or the balance. Couple of the balances went down by more than I expected that they would under normal circumstances. For example, building rentals, there were some, what was expanded out of building rentals?
Building rentals over last month? I have, I have to go take a look. Usually the majority of that is, is just sort of what custodians worked for rental events, but we haven't really been renting the buildings out that much, so majority of that would usually just be our summer custodial staff. But I can take a look into, back into the history and, and give you an update.
Okay, I'm just curious. I mean, since this is a six-month start to end, it covers a lot of territory. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Roger. Questions for Nicole on the revolving account? Thank you, Nicole.
Of course.
Dr. Conti, is there anything else to come before the committee?
Uh, no, sir.
Anybody else have any old business or anything else they want to bring up before we adjourn? Seeing nothing, any need for executive session tonight? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.